I'm going to call this meeting to order. And at this time, I'd ask all in attendance to please remove your hats if you have any, and please rise as we have the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and the Texas flag. I'll say invocation this morning, if that's all right. If you'd bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come gathered here before you to help make good decisions for our community. We ask that you give us grace and wisdom and compassion for our fellow citizens, as well as follow the law and the principles and the values that you've set forth for us. We ask that you protect everybody in this room and their families, and we ask for grace, especially on those uniformed men and women who make such sacrifices for us on a day-to-day basis. Father, we know that you are the Maker of all things and the giver of all things, and we just ask to put your living arms around this community today and tomorrow and always. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, Madam, actually, Sir Clerk, I am certifying that today is July 31st, 2019. We're at 901 North Leopard and 3rd floor, the Nuñez County Courthouse, and all members of this county commissioners' court are present, and I certify there is a quorum. This time, I'll call for Tim to give us a safety briefing. We have a full house, Tim. And I'd ask all of you to, I'm sorry, the time is 9:18 on the record.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, we are meeting here, as the judge said, in the 3rd floor at the Nuñez County Courthouse located at 901 Leopard Street. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the 3rd floor atrium. As you exit the Commissioners' Court, past the information technology office. In the event of a fire, fire extinguishers located at the rear of the courtroom. In addition, there are five fire extinguishers located throughout the 3rd floor atrium area immediately outside the courtroom. In the event of a cardiac emergency, there is an AED located on the right wall as you exit the courtroom between Human Resources and the information technology offices. In the event of an emergency, participants responsible for dialing 911 will be Tyner and Edward. Participants who are certifying CPR today is going to be Deputy Vasquez. In the event of an evacuation, the egress route for this courtroom will be down the atrium stairs immediately outside. Proceed out the double doors located on the LePans side of the courthouse and muster across the street in the parking lot. In the event that we need to shelter in place, will remain in this building and await further instructions from the Nuñez County Sheriff's Office. Our shared safety topics for today are preventive injuries. That concludes my brief.
Thank you so much. At this time, Commissioners, I have minutes from Commissioners' Court dated June 19th, 2019. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose same sign. At this time, it gives me great pleasure to recognize State Representative, the Honorable Chairman Todd Hunter, who has a very special moment here today to share with us as he swears in the Honorable Tim McCoy. He is our sitting judge, county court at law number five to the Juvenile Justice Advisory Board. Judge McCoy, it was great news when you texted me that the governor had made this appointment. We think he made a fine selection, but more importantly, we know that through the activism of the Juvenile Justice Advisory Board, you're going to be able to really be our eyes, our ears, in some of the most important grants that will be accessible, you know, to us. You'll be able to share that information as you attend these meetings, and we hope to hear your reports as often as you wish to make them. And to swear you in today is another fine gentleman who also serves the state of Texas. And so with that, I'll yield to, as I said last week, to the man in black.
Thank you. Go Potter. I want to say one thing. I am really glad to swear in Judge McCoy rather than swear at. Why don't you explain before I, if it's all right?
Absolutely.
That you can explain, the judge can explain the honor of the...
And the only thing we ask is for the purpose of video, we're being monitored all over Nuñez County, if you would approach the mic.
Okay, how about this?
There you go.
Should be working. Oh, okay. Well, I can be loud. I'll be brief. You know, Court Five serves, and here's all the juvenile cases in Nuñez County, specifically the juvenile criminal cases, as well as CPS cases. And Texas Juvenile Justice Department is the statewide facility where a lot of these kids go, and it's kind of their last stop in our system. And there's been a number of issues with TJJD, and issues that affect our county and the kids of our county. And I wanted to be a part of the decision-making progress on a state level, so I can better serve the children of Nuñez County. That was my goal. And when I decided I wanted to do that, I approached Chairman Hunter, as well as Commissioner Chesney, Judge Maderi, to ask what I can do. And he put me in contact with the right people, wrote some recommendations, and I ended up getting appointed to the advisory board. So I'm looking forward to it, and I'm hoping it'll help me better serve the children of Nuñez County.
And Judge, thank you for designating some time. And so everybody knows, it's great to have somebody from the coastal bend that has input and impact statewide on the juvenile system. So let me swear you in, and just follow me. This is the best time you can see a guy that doesn't have to wear a judge's robe but dressed in black swearing in somebody. I, State's your name.
Aye, Timothy McCoy.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties of this state office position
Execute the duties of this state office position.
Of the state of Texas
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best
And will, to the best.
Of my ability
Of my ability.
Preserve
Preserve.
Protect and defend
Protect and defend.
The Constitution
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States
And laws of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Judge, would you honor us and allow us to take a picture here for our permanent record?
Aye.
Do you want to?
Come around. Yeah. Come on up. Right here. Yeah, yeah, right. Whatever. Congratulations, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, whatever. I'm just recording.
That was good.
I'll make him look good.
In the glory.
One, two, three. One, two, three. No problem. That's going to be great. Great honor. And as everybody gets back to their seat, for those of you that weren't in attendance a week ago, the honors just keep on coming to Nuñez County and to our judiciary, and that makes us all so very proud. So I think what we need to do, and I know Michael is working on those letters for the Court of Excellence downstairs in the central jury room entrance, but, you know, we also should have a, maybe like a small plaque that lists all the judges that are sitting on statewide boards. Because Judge Maderi, you're sitting on the Indigent Defense Commission Board, and, I mean, we need people to understand that when our judiciary is active and when our elected officials are active in statewide boards, it helps our county. And it's just a great, it's a great asset to have these resources, and we need, we need to have, we need to put everybody on notice. So thank you again, and we'll move on now to another amazing distinction, and that is the Texas Historical Commission has recognized the Nuñez County Historical Commission with a very important award called the Distinguished Service Award for their 2018, the year 2018 Year of Service. And at this time, the court will recognize members of the Historic Commission who are here in the audience with us, and ask that if you come forward and if you'd like to make a comment, I know this was an important distinction, or Tyner, do you have any commentary to make? I know Ms. Eisenhower couldn't be here with us today, but on her behalf and on everybody's behalf, will you all accept this award? Okay, let me, let's come, let me come down to you guys and make the presentation and take a picture.
Hi there. Absolutely, you can.
Can we go down there, too? Do you want to come down? If you want to come down.
Let me get behind you. I'm tall, I can.
You're good, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate your support always.
Always.
Always appreciate your support.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all your work.
You tell Ms. Anita that our mystery is...
Thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
As we get back to our seats, I reflected upon the fact that I was looking at the city's logo just yesterday, and as Mayor McCombs entrusted me to take a pin to another mayor of another city, and on that city logo is the mirador, you know, the lookouts, the miradores. And in every one of those, there you can see or learn a little bit about our history. And I know a lot about that because my grandmother, Dr. Cleo, helped write almost every single one of those markers. And if it weren't for the Historical Commission, we would really have no presence of who we are. And so I really want to thank you. I know that's just a small certificate, and, but just know, it comes with so much love and so much thankfulness for all the good work that you've done. And you can rest assured that for generations to come, we know who we are because of the people that served on your commission to help us remember our history. So thank you for...
We love Dr. Cleo.
Oh, thank you. At this time, I'd ask Edward to come forward. There was no action required, Commissioners, on those last two items, just for the clerk. Oh, there's Ms. Anita.
Let's take a picture again.
Ms. Anita, we just wanted to express on behalf of Nuñez County Commissioners' Court our pride in that the Texas Historical Commission has recognized Nuñez County Historical Commission with a Distinguished Service Award. I'm not surprised at all with your efforts, with your leadership, and with your great membership, which ranges in, I believe, from eight to 98, something like that. But we are, we're most thankful for all your work, and if you, we just wanted to recognize you.
Thank you, and I apologize
No worries.
For being late, but I do have a battery that's worth 13 more months.
That's great. That's great.
I apologize for being late.
No worries. We just wanted to make certain that you knew that we were grateful to you.
We thank you all.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll ask Edward to come forward. Oh, he's already ahead of the game. As I call your name, I just want to reaffirm that even though most of you have delineated the item number, that all of you are here for the same item number, in which case I will ask you to, to make comment at the appropriate time when we deal with the agenda item, but just in the interest of certainty. May Nardone, item number four. James Bettis, item number four. Megan Furen, item number four. My eyes are, these are not my normal glasses, sorry, guys. Meredith Darden, item number four. Carla Finkhouse, item number four. Paulette Waharado, item number four. And Jenny Cross, item number?
Tuya.
Tuya. I'm going to ask Ms. Cross to come forward at this time, and I'm going to mark Tuya under the item. Welcome, Jenny.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Judge, I just wanted to say thank you for supporting us at our press conference on Monday on this really important issue. Tuya is, the Tuya Board is going to be considering a rate hike on next Tuesday in Galveston at their board meeting. And I just, the opportunity for public comment via email ends today at noon, which makes it really difficult for anybody to do a resolution or a letter, but I wanted to extend the opportunity, if any of you wanted to do a letter, that we would be happy to take that to Galveston and submit it on the public record on your behalf. So with that, I just wanted to leave you with the resolution that the chamber board did that will be submitted today. And if anybody has any questions, or if I can provide any information, please let me know.
I'm signing myself up for public comment. As you know, we cannot comment back to you, but my public comment on Tuya is that I did attend a very strong press conference, and it was a regional attendance of chambers of commerce and county judges and county commissioners and chambers. It was just really well done as far as regional support in opposition to these tax hikes that are really unwarranted at this time. And, and so our best efforts here, even though we felt like we already told them once, you remember the old adage, you tell them, then you tell them what you told them, and then you tell them what you told them again. And we're at the tell them what you told them stage, and we may even be at the tell them what you told them again stage. So I'm going to send a letter on my behalf and like to urge all Commissioners, if you could, even if it's quick and efficient, if you might do that and use Ms. Cross as a reference.
Absolutely, and if anybody needs
A resource, I should say.
Please let me know. I'll be happy to send that along.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment at this time before I close and move on? Okay, hearing none. Commissioners, we have a consent agenda. It's two items, A and B, and I'd entertain a motion for those items at this time.
So moved.
Second. I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on those items? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Pose same sign. Okay, so we are now at the regular agenda item, and the first item is to discuss and consider the suspension of the maximum accrual vacation hours under Rule 4.21 of the personnel rules for the chief deputy, assistant chief deputies, captain positions of the sheriff's office, and that we authorize the Director of Human Resources, that would be Julie Guerra, to request such suspension for civil service sheriff's office employees from the Nuñez County Civil Service Commission. And to here to present this item is Julie.
I'd like to ask that the suspension continue through the new fiscal year on their maximum hours of 240 hours. It just continues to roll over and carry over into the new fiscal year due to the fact that we have several vacancies in the sheriff's department, and several of the employees are not able to take their vacation throughout the year. And so that would not allow them, that would keep them from losing their hours over the 240 going into the new fiscal year.
That's for this year only, right?
For this year only, yes. It would be for the ending on September 30th.
Julie, we did this last year, right?
Yes, sir, we did.
We just have that perpetual need that every year we need to
And I think it's, I think it's important also to look at it on a, on a yearly basis because, you know, we don't know what one year is going to present over another year. I do think it's really important that we send a good message that we're here to be supportive of the benefits that employees deserve. And that's really why they, why they exist. It's why the package is developed in that way. I also think it's important to send the same strength and messaging to the sheriff's department through, if, I've got messengers here, so if you don't mind me pointing you out, that, sending it back, to make sure that, that supervisors really do give the time off when it's asked. It's really important that we do try to honor tho, that benefit package that is presented for the benefit of that employee and actually for the, for the well-being of the institution. Because when you take time off, you're able to come back rejuvenated and have the ability to do your job so much better. We know that staffing is an issue. I mean, I'm not oblivious to it, but I just want you to know that it's an equal, we want to help, but we also want to encourage, if you'll help us do so, to allow people to take the time off when they're asking for it, and that should be used only in a, in a case-by-case, absolute need basis. And here to kind of give us as a resource is Joe Gonzalez with Sheriff's Association.
Commissioners and Judge, you know, we're very grateful for you guys doing this, and our supervisors try their best
I know.
Over the jail. You know, there's minimum requirements that we have to meet, and so our supervisors bend over backwards to give as many people a possibility to take vacation. However, I mean, as you guys know, our staffing, you know, it is, it is what it is, and that's why we come and, and ask for this time off.
Yes.
You know, we're not blaming anybody, you know. These guys, Julie does a great job, you guys are doing a great job, the sheriff is doing a great job, it's just, you know, those are the cards that were dealt with, and we just try to do the best that we can with, with what we got. And so, you know, we really appreciate you guys helping us with rolling this vacation over, and it sends a clear message to our guys that you guys back them up, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Could I get a motion? We can have further discussion. I forgot the protocol here. I've got a motion, second. We can enter into discussion. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yeah, you know, in fact, I may with Julie on this because I have some concerns. And my, I know this is a good thing to do, give them a chance because, but I want to take it back, Mr. Gonzalez, to the sheriff's department, that we need to try a little bit harder. They got to have vacation too, like anybody else, right? And I, and I think that the employees there, the sheriff's department deserves to have vacation. I mean, you worked all year long, I mean, that's overworking them. But, but the only thing that concerns me here, every time we extend this, say 240 hours, and now they got another hours over that.
Right.
And say, for instance, they retire or they leave, they're going to, they're going to lose. They're going to lose those hours because the only hours they can get paid for is 96 hours. So I don't care if you have 240, 250, 260, all they're going to get paid for is 96 hours. So really, to the employees is not fair. You know, I think, I think that somehow they should get a vacation like anybody else. If the administration is getting vacation, they should get vacation. Because I think that my concern is the employees in the bottom. They're the ones that need the break. They're the ones that need to get out of there, you know, and stay out of there for a while. But I think in the long run, at the end of the day, I don't think it's fair if they leave and they lose those hours, because they don't get paid for them. That's only, that's the only, my only concern. You know, they can have 280 hours, but when you leave, you're only going to get 96 hours. So now they worked all those hours, and they're not going to be compensated for. That's my concern with the employees.
That's correct.
Commissioners, any other very good points? Hearing no other discussion at this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Pose same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So we're going to move to the presentation to consider authorizing the county judge to execute a collective bargaining labor agreement between Nuñez County and Nuñez County Sheriff's Officers Association for the fiscal years 2019 through 2020, I'm sorry, the fiscal year is 2019, 2020 through 2022, 2023. And here to help make that presentation is Rick Navarro. He's our designated collective bargaining guru, expert, consultant, a lawyer. Thank you. And chief negotiator. And I'd like to point out that members of the collective bargaining team are also present. Thank you, Rick. I think we're about to get set up here.
Yes. Your Honor, members of the commission, my name's Rick Navarro. I'm a private attorney, practice in the state of Texas, and do quite a bit of collective bargaining work for local government. Our firm represents only local government in the state of Texas, and so that's our specialty. I have actually been working, had the privilege and honor of working with Nuñez County since the county became a collective bargaining entity back in 2008. We were retained at that time to assist the county in converting over to that process which had been authorized by the voters. We weren't involved in the referendum that led to the county becoming collective bargaining, but once that occurred, we were retained to assist the county in coming together with a labor agreement. And that's what we did at that time. And so this last bargaining session, I believe, was either my fourth or fifth contract that I have negotiated for the county. And I have to say that the bargaining here in Nuñez County has at all times been very professional, very smooth. I feel that we have resolved and improved a lot of issues and a lot of streamlined a lot of the benefit package, not only for the deputy sheriffs and the sheriff's office, but ultimately including the constables. And the reason I say that is because when we first started, the law appeared to exclude constables from the bargaining unit. The way we handled that in the very first bargaining session is we went ahead and negotiated with the deputy sheriffs. We set aside the constables. We had a friendly lawsuit over that. The court ruled that the constables were members of the bargaining unit. This court decided to work with that ruling. This court, at that time, elected to not appeal that ruling. And I, I want to tell you that that turned out to be a very wise and prudent decision because this issue rose in other parts of the state. It came up in Bear County, it came up in several other places. I can tell you, in Bear County, the courts ruled the other way. They said constables were not included. But last year, the Texas Supreme Court finally came down and said, no, constables are a part of the bargaining unit, and you have to, you have to negotiate with them as well. And so all the money and effort that was expended in other parts of the state on that issue, this county avoided. Because very early on, we came up with a system that folded the constables into the bargaining contract and into the wage scale. And so that got resolved at that time, and, and like I say, I think it turned out to be a very good decision. So in this bargaining cycle, the last contract was a four-year contract, I believe. We received a notice of intent to bargain at the beginning of the year. I was retained again. The bargaining team has been county attorney, Laura Garcia Jimenez, the auditor's office, the HR department representative of the sheriff's office. So, you know, all of the aspects of the bargaining were represented on the county side. On the, on the union side, long ago, the NCSOA, Nuñez County Sheriff's Officer Association, which is a CLEET-based organization, was recognized as the majority bargaining agent. That's been the case from the beginning, and so we've been working with them. Ron Delord, who has also quite a bit of experience in this area on the, on the police side, represented them. And we've worked in the last two cycles with Mr. Jose Gonzalez as the president of the association. So I'm not, I'm not going to tell you that we haven't had our arguments and disagreements at the bargaining table. We have, but they've been very civil. And so today, we're in a procedure where what we did in this cycle is we simply worked off of the contract that we had in place before. The very first thing we did was go through all the articles, identify the articles that were fine, we left those alone. We identified articles that either the association or the county team felt needed some tweaking and some improvement, and that's what we concentrated on. We started in April, we ended in July, we had about six or seven meetings. A lot of this contract was fiscal. A lot of it was fiscal. And, and so we did reach what's called a tentative agreement on all of the items. The matter was already presented to the membership. We have a letter, you should have a letter in your packet, from the on the union side, long ago, the NCSOA, Nwessis County Sheriff's Officer Association, which is a CLEET-based organization, was recognized as the majority bargaining agent. That's been the case from the beginning. And so, we've been working with them. Ron de Lord, who has also quite a bit of experience in this area on the, on the police side, represented them. And we've worked in the last two cycles with Mr. Jose Gonzalez as the president of the association. So, I'm not, I'm not gonna tell you that we haven't had our arguments and disagreements at the bargaining table. We have, but they've been very civil. And so today, we're in a procedure where what we did in this cycle is we simply worked off of the contract that we had in place before. The very first thing we did was go through the articles, identify the articles that were fine. We left those alone. We identified articles that either the association or the county team felt needed some tweaking and some improvement. And that's what we concentrated on. We started in April, we ended in July, we had about six or seven meetings. A lot of this contract was fiscal. A lot of it was fiscal. And, and so, we did reach what's called a tentative agreement on all of the items. The matter was already presented to the membership. We have a letter, you should have a letter in your packet, from the majority bargaining agent advising us that the membership has reviewed and approved this contract. It's for four years with a five-year evergreen clause, meaning that, you know, you, if you don't get a new contract after the fourth year, the contract would just roll over to another year. Of course, each year, you may get a, a new notice of intent to bargain, but, you know, potentially, it's a very stable contract for you and for the association. It's very predictable and very stable. And so, that's one of the terms that we negotiated, was what the evergreen clause should be. But they've approved it, and so now it's before you for approval. And I can, so let me, and I believe you have, I believe you have this on your screen. You'll see, this is the semifinal contract that's been ratified by the association. By letter dated July 25, they advised us that they had voted on it. You know, what happens at the bargaining table is that the union has its own organizational structure. It's a democratic structure. They have elected board members, they have a president. You know, they have their membership bylaws. So, we don't get involved in how they present this or how they handle their negotiations. They handle that. So, any internal agreements or disagreements or disputes or points of view, whatever, that they have within the membership, the bargaining agent handles all of that. So, we're not really privy to that. When we get a letter from the duly-designated president telling us that it's passed and it's been voted on, we can, that's a legal instrument that we can rely on, basically saying, the union is satisfied with this contract. And therefore, we can go forward. And that's when we bring it to you for presentation. But you can see from the table of contents, these are all of the, the subject matter areas that were addressed. I would, let me see here. Just to give you an idea of how we work this, let me show you this, what I call the TA draft of ratification. This is a draft of the contract. After the, the teams have said, yeah, this is the tentative agreement that we are each going to present, the union to their members, us to you. It just shows some of the work product, okay? You'll see here where we kept track of, LAI means leave as is. That means that we TA'd this article in June 6. And then, some of these others, you'll say, you'll see where they say TA'd 7/15/2019, meaning that we reached a tentative agreement at the, at that meeting. So, that's how we keep track of progress as we go through. So, this is the work product documenting what was agreed on, when it was agreed on. And, and we just kind of work through the, each meeting, we work through the, through the process. And Judge, I think you-
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really like this system. It's, it's helpful for someone that was not a member of the collective bargaining to just say, okay, I understand. I mean, I, if it says leave as is, then it's nice to say, just move on, right?
Anything that's worked, basically say-
And, right.
Any problems, any grievances, any-
Right.
No, nope, okay.
I guess I like, I like the system very much. I think it was very helpful. I want to just kind of get a little housekeeping out of the way. As chief negotiator, are you here today to ask this court to approve and ratify the, the agreement that we have before us in our notebook, and that was posted as well?
I am.
Okay. And also, Joe Gonzalez, are you here to tell this court that you had the opportunity and that you, in fact, did present this agreement as we're asked to approve it to your union?
Yes, ma'am.
And did your union authorize you to, on their behalf, ratify this?
Yes, ma'am.
And execute it? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we all know that we've heard why we're here, and, and that, and then now, I didn't mean to interrupt, it's just really important to me that we know what we're being asked to do. So that if commissioners have, because you've got such a good table of contents here with these articles, commissioners, if you have any questions regarding any of the articles, number one through, is it 20?
You know, another thing that-
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gonzalez brought up earlier was the vacation. And, and one of the things that we added to this contract is a mechanism we put in place that the union asked and the, and the county agreed was to include our vacation as a productive time. So, that's a big change to this contract. And it's not gonna solve, you know, we don't have magic wands, but it's gonna help with the vacation problem that, that we have ongoing. So, I want to point that out, that, you know, we did, we're, we are trying to make mechanisms to avoid those issues down the road. Is it a solvall? No, it's not. But we, you know, on both sides, we're both trying to address the issues and trying to fix them and, and move forward. So, that is definitely something that I, you know, we both kind of agree that that's gonna help us with this.
Right. Rick, you agree. That's that holiday productive time issue.
Yes. And there's, there's actually two components to that. One of them has to do with the overtime, where we, we were following a very strict version of the Fair Labor Standards Act, where, where non-productive time does not count as hours worked for overtime purposes. And plus, the county is adhering to the 7K provision, which gives you, for law enforcement, a 43-hour work week. You have a-
So, our ti- our hands were tied.
Two-week, you have a two-week pay cycle, which is an 86-hour cycle. So, so that, that part stayed the same. But we did agree that vacation time would be counted as productive time for overtime purposes. And, and that was something that was very clearly a negotiated item. And we did agree to do that. And we agreed to do that because it seemed, number one, that seems to be the trend throughout the state in these contracts. And number two, it's something that management can ultimately control and manage. So, we were fine with going that. We also, on the item you just acted on about the rollover, we had some, you know, pretty hard conversations about whether that should be written hard into the contract. The county team was uncomfortable with that. We counter-proposed. We said, look, here, we're not gonna agree to writing a hard rollover provision. We're gonna stick to the personnel rules on it. However, we will put in there that we acknowledge your, you know, right, or, you know, your access to the court to request an agenda item on a case, year-by-year basis, for an approved rollover. So, because we agree that the court has the authority to do that, we're not gonna override the court's authority in the contract to do that. On the other hand, we don't have a problem with you coming before the court. In that way, we can deal with the situation each year, instead of having a hard rule that applies across the board for four years. And so, the union-
That sounds like a good compromise.
Hey, we're, we're fine, as long as it's understood that we can petition the court for a, a rollover. And, and we say, well, frankly, we think you can do that without the language. But, you know, we're happy to put the language in there that says that you have that option. And that way, the court and the, and, and your support people can say, yeah, this is a fair thing to do this year because of, there's equitable reasons for why we don't want people losing their time. Or the court can evaluate it and say, no, we don't, we think we're gonna stick to our rule on that, you know, if you don't use that time, you lose it. So, but it's gonna be on a case-by-case basis each year. So, that was a good balance, and that's a very good example of the negotiation process. So, you know, we got that one resolved there.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Can, and, and I don't mean to, were you done presenting before I asked my question?
I was just going to, basically, I wanted you to see the table of contents, just so that you could see the detail. And the only other thing that I would put on the table for you is that there's gonna be a pay matrix attached to the contract, which is gonna show the, the new salaries. But I wanted you to see this working product, which, which your auditor can address in more detail, because this shows you the actual percentages that were done. And I want you to understand that part, because that was a big part of the negotiations. We pretty much determined that we had a labor market problem at the front end, in terms of retention, okay? And that's nobody's fault, it's just the market. You are competing against-
I'm gonna have to disagree, but okay.
You're competing against the city, okay? Here, we compete-
That's true.
We compete against the city. I just finished negotiating the El Paso Sheriff's contract for them. Same problem. You're competing against the city, and you're competing against the feds. In the valley, with Brownsville and, you know, and the cities there, we're competing against the feds. So, there's always somebody that you're competing against. You can't compete with the feds, okay? There's just no way. When the unions say, oh, we need to make what the, we're like, can't do it, ain't gonna happen, you know. But a lot of times, so here, you know, there's that undertow of, well, what do they do at the city? What do they do at the city? So, there's an effort to go there. But I think the thing that really convinced the county team that we needed to put some real dollars on the front end here, is that the trend lines were very clear that we were losing, we were training people and losing people. And, and we just thought, okay, we need to, we're actually wasting money here. We're spending resources, training people, they're not staying very long, they're moving on, and we're losing that investment. And that's why you see here, in the first year, we did, we didn't do an across-the-board percentage. We did a stair-stepped percentage, where the front end, okay, is there, is it, well, this is one that was at, at the table, but, I mean, this shows the percentages that were, so, it's, it's loaded higher at the bottom, okay, at the entry level.
Is it maybe not the right one?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we may have a correction, commissioners, but, but I think your premise is still valid. If you want to go ahead and, we'll get the right chart to you, but go ahead with your premise, because your premise is valid.
The premise is that in year one, the entry-level positions are going to, up to Deputy Sheriff III are gonna get 8% to base, okay? The next levels are going to get 5. And then, at the top, at the upper management levels, it's gonna be 4. And then, the top levels get 5%. Okay? So, that's how we made the adjustment to negotiate on a rank-by-rank basis where our problems were. It was pretty clear that we needed to, to put some money up front. It was also clear that once people, once an employee is here, I think the tipping point was like, seven years, seven years up, they tend to stay. Okay? So, the trick is getting, competing with the labor market in this region, getting them to stay, you know, capturing the investment into the, into the employee.
So, by front-end loading, you, you achieve that goal?
You achieve that goal. Furthermore, it has a cascading effect in that, we had a really interesting conversation at the table about this, that, you know, do we need more positions? And the outcome was, no, we have the positions that we need, we just can't keep them full. So, we're not gonna talk about adding positions, we're gonna talk about, what is it gonna take to keep them full? And I think there was a consensus that if we can keep them full, that will take care of our overtime problem, and it will take care of our people not being able to take vacation problem.
And, and I can attest to that. And, you know, you can give us 20 more positions right now in the jail, and we'll take them. But we're not gonna fill them.
It's not gonna matter.
Because the salary is just not there. So, right now, we need to focus on filling what we got. And then, once we fill what we got, it's probably not gonna solve the overtime issue 100%, but it's gonna, it's definitely gonna wind it down. Now, you know, once we get the, those, you know, 200 positions filled, then we can talk about filling the vacancies. But until, we, if we can't fill what we got, there's just, it's really, we're kind of spinning our wheels.
And, and let me, let me just add, if I, because that's the area I wanted to talk about just real quick, and then I'll let you keep going. And Dale, I want to get Dale later on the financial implications. But what sold me on this was when we, when I got this, and I, I read, and then I asked Tyler a couple of questions, because I want to make sure that's clear. I did not talk to anybody on any of, you know, the other side on this. But I had some questions in, in preparing for this meeting. I, you know, had a couple of conversations, or a conversation with Tyler on it. So, what I liked about it, and what really sold me on it, and I, again, I want to hear from Dale on the financial implications, was, was exactly what you're talking about. This court has repeatedly talked about trying to pay some of the, and I, and I, the, the lower-end paid folks more, and I don't know how to say that-
The frontline?
The frontline more. And, and-
It's on the ground?
Right. And, and I'm sorry, I don't know how to say that right, so I want to make sure I'm saying it right. But what I liked about this immensely was that it was very front-loaded with, with those frontline people. And that, that is a very positive situation. My understanding, I think, also from Tyler, I may be wrong, was that it was overwhelmingly ratified by the union. And maybe you can tell me what the-
What was the vote? It was 138 to 2.
So, so to me, that's, that's a very strong sign from, from the union, and the fact that Judge Canales was very heavily involved in, in this process, that gives me a lot of comfort, that, that this is a very good deal for our workers and for our county. Now, again, I want to hear from Dale, when you get through on how that's gonna affect our budget. But I, I think this is an incredibly solid step, because, and I think, I also heard, I don't know where, doesn't this take us, if, if this is passed, and if we pass it, this, this really moves us up as far as, like, we're way low on the pay scales of counties our size, and this moves us up considerably? Can someone tell me about that?
It will, it will improve your situation. It will move you up. Of course, you know-
Don't really ask that question. You may not like the answer, but-
It's low.
But it's low. We moved up. But you know what? It's a movement.
Right. That's what we're trying-
That's really what we should emphasize. We-
We're definitely moving in the right direction.
Right.
At the end of it, as, you know, as you know, we looked at the top 30 counties in the state, we're dead last. Okay, well, we're 15th in population. Our goal is to try to get to 15.
Right. So, we're, let's not hide the ball. So, we're 29 now. But look, the point is, is that we're not 30. We're not in last place anymore. And the only reason I was throwing a little jab early on, and it wasn't a personal one, it was just, when we say there's nobody's fault, there is somebody's fault. You make a conscious decision over time whether or not people ought to be paid what they're worth. And when you look back 10 years and go, oh, my gosh, we're in last place, there is fault somewhere. But make no mistake, today, all we care about is that we're moving in the right direction. And one of the nicest things for me is to see our chief negotiator standing with the chief nego, well, you're sort of the chief of your side, right, Joe, for the Sheriff's Association, saying that this is a good agreement. This is one that both sides believe there was genuine negotiation, some hard moments, but some really good compromise. And one thing we haven't talked about is that because of some of your negotiations that we really couldn't address in this contract, do, I want you to know that they still got over here on this side. And I think that you'll be pleased to know that you have affected the way I feel about our healthcare plan, for instance. And, and, and then the challenges that I've given to our healthcare consultant to bring back the type of policy, if it's good for you at the Sheriff's Department, it's good for every department in the county. And I want to thank you for that.
Telemedicine, and that'd be a great thing.
And, and you're gonna see, and you know what? We've got a court decision to make. But because of you, and because of the negotiations on our side as well, you're gonna see that, I believe, come to a reality because of, of the advocacy that you all brought. So, so sometimes a contract cannot memorialize all the good effects, the ripple effect. This is one instance where you've made a big ripple effect for everybody's benefit, and that's a good thing. So, it's, it's very unprecedented to have a 138 to 2 vote. It means, it means that we've done something right.
It's a good vote.
Mm-hmm. And we need to move the needle. We, we should feel proud that we have an agreement before this court that moves the needle in the right direction.
Well, let me point out one other fiscal aspect of this. Aside from the adjustment in year one, which we think addresses, you know, as effectively and fiscally responsibly as we can, okay, the labor economics in the area, okay? What you're effectively doing is you're sort of setting your budget for this group for four years.
Correct.
Dale, can you-
The budget process-
Maybe that's a good time for Dale.
Extended budget process. So, here's, here's the deal. His, his job, which he-
Hold on, just a second.
Did a marvelous job at-
Yeah, hold on. Can you just jump in? Because I'm not trying to cut you off, but I'm trying to cut you off. So, can you jump in and tell us, because that's what I want to know, and then everybody else can ask whatever they want to ask, but tell us what effect this has on the budget, how the impact is, and where you think the money's coming from, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, we, we, when we started this, this, this process, we worked with, with Judge Canales on determining how much do we want to offer for the contract. And we looked at the last year's contract, or the last contract we had and the year before that, determine the overall contract through the four years. And all the contracts we saw was around $3 million for the four years. And that's where we aimed our, our arrows at, to try to keep our, at, at the end of four years, our total increase will be more, no more than $3 million for the entire year. And we also looked at how to structure this. And as Rick was saying, we saw that a lot of our employees would come in, get trained, and leave, and all of our vacancies, which would have us, a lot of them were in the very first levels of employees. Now, we're trying to address- were in the very first levels of employees. Now, we're trying to address, to try to fix this, this, this is what was done la, the last contract, they, they did the, they tried to do this at the end of the contract, instead of the beginning of the contract. We're trying to do the beginning of the contract, because we know we have several scenarios we have to address. Not only, uh, we, we need to get them higher pay to try to, to maintain their, their levels, and try to reduce our, our overtime, and try to keep the people here. However, we knew, we know now that we will have tax complications the next few years because of the three-and-a-half percent, uh, rollback rate that's going to be there. And when we start talking about budget coming up soon, and you'll see that, that yes, it's a million dollars this year, and yes, we will probably have to look at very hard of how we're going to, to fund this, and, and we have a lot of new property this year, so that might cover this. Until we get all the total values there, it, it's going to take a lot of difficult budget decisions, but after looking at all the numbers we had, and, and what we're trying to address, we felt this was the right steps to take.
And what we did is, like, we have a, a, a tool, you know, that the auditor's office, uh, had developed, uh, we had originally developed it in my office back in '08, and then they took it and refined it. But basically, what it does, it allows us to calculate what the cost of the contract is, not only in one fiscal year, but as we go across the board into the other fiscal year. So, it gives you the ability to do a budget process, not just year-to-year, but, you know, multiple years, and to look at the cumulative effect of what you're obligating the county to. This year, I'll tell you what, with that rollback change that happened at the legislature, there's one dynamic that's very unique that we really had not dealt with before. More often than not, from the management side, you know, he mentioned that the other contract was, was what we call backloaded, okay? I mean, from the, as a general rule from the management side, we prefer to backload rather than frontload, because the time value of money, it means that, you know, we don't have to come up with that money until later, and it gives us, whatever the term of the contract is, to sort of plan for and figure out how we're going to pay the backload. Um, this year, because of the dynamic introduced under those rollback changes, it made a lot more sense to frontload, and that's what we've been doing in other venues. We've been frontloading because of the uncertainties created with these restrictions. And, and then the other thing here, you had the also very, uh, uh, clear issue of not being able to keep people, you know, uh, the front, the frontline people. So, it, it made for some really good reasons for us to take a hard look at frontloading, uh, this contract. But, and the union did work with us, their, or their original proposal had much higher numbers in years, two, three, and four, and we basically said, okay, look, we'll frontload it, we'll frontload it, because there's good reasons to frontload it, but we're going to have to shave some off, you know, in year two, three, four. I mean, we'll do what we can, but when it comes down to it, in a four-year contract, you know, we got to be under three mil in order for.
That's right. And just for everybody's purposes, and the audience, and listening at home, what they're talking about is a 3.5% revenue caps that come into effect next year, and, and that is, that was a concern. There's also a tremendous validity to negotiating a contract today to have stability for the next four years because of revenue caps. This is an economics lesson, it's a very, uh, it's harsh if, if you, if that's not the world that you enjoy messing around in, but this is a very important opportunity to create stability and to do something good. And I'm going to be honest with you, Joe, I wish we could do more. I really do. This is about all that we can do.
Judge, uh, you know, when we went to the table, we told, like, hey, this is where we feel we should be, but we understand the county's economic position, and this is, you know, there's a, a, you know, a financial restraint, you know?
Right.
They can only do so much. And, and we know that, so, you know, we're, you know, and that's why.
Well, I'm, I'm glad, I'm, I'm glad that you relay that, because it's not only a, a financial constraint, these are the, this is a sacrifice the county will make for the betterment of its employees, and for, I think, in the interest of public safety in Noises County. But make no mistake, it's not like we just have it to give. Even this will put a tremendous strain. But when I look at certified numbers, Dale, to go back to the fiscal nature of it, and we can anticipate a 9% growth, I can anticipate that that might reflect a $3 billion, uh, increase, and then if I take 30 cents for every $1,000, I know it's a little more, I'm just doing the easy numbers, I can project that that's probably an additional $900,000 worth of revenue to the county. Would that be more or less?
Around that, yes.
So, if we did that, that's why I'm thinking, when I came in, commissioners, fiscally, with what I knew the absolute ceiling was, you're, you're, this is it. We've, we've gone as far as we can go, and, um,
Be responsible.
And be, and be fiscally responsible. And so, I, I wanted to present that as a, as a backup to, to Commissioner Chazne's question. Um, we don't want to cut you short, I think, was there anything further you'd like to present? And then, was there anything, yes, maybe one thing? Timing, perhaps?
Well, the, yeah, the issue with the cadet corrections, they're technically not members of the bargaining.
Yeah, that's just something that you'll see commissioners in your budget package, that if you'll notice that there's going to be, and you haven't seen the final yet, but when you do get your final budget package, and you see cadet officers request, just, and you wonder, why wasn't that put in? It's because they are not part of this collective bargaining, uh, package, so, that just a, is there anything, um, from the Madam Attorney, the county attorney, that you want to talk about timing, why it's important to address this now? I mean, we are looking to ratify.
I, I think the important part about, uh, getting it approved is, obviously, it gives you the, the dollar amount that you're going to have to be working on in the budget. You're during the budget, uh, cycle right now, so it's very helpful, uh, at this time, um, to go forward.
Yeah, this will tie that, that down, and I, trust me, the auditor, and, I mean, it, the numbers have been really vetted tight, 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 and placed where they need to be placed.
And hearing that, and I'm still completely open for more discussion, commissioners, but is there a motion that I should entertain at this time?
Well, let me, I got some.
Motion, and, yeah, I have some.
And then we'll do discussion?
Second, and just.
Okay, we've got a motion and, and a second for the clerk, and then, uh, I'm going to call Commissioner Modas, because he spoke first, if that's okay. Go ahead.
These last two sheets that you've been presenting to us, I don't think they're a part of the copy that we got, uh, but if we can get copies of those sent to us with the spreadsheet for the percentages broken down by, um, correction officer deputy one, all the way up to lieutenant, and then the one that has captain and above, that would be helpful. And then this one, that kind of shows the base year and, and each year progression as far as how much we're actually putting in total, I, I think that that would be helpful just to keep that, uh, for future reference. Uh.
Yeah, that's backup work product, Commissioner.
Okay.
And, and he would like it.
Yeah. And so, for, for me, I, I'm, I'm glad that we had this. I'm, I've been expecting, um, a more drawn-out process that, that has a lot of, um, just broken-down meetings where people are getting up, throwing chairs, and walking out, right? So, that was my experience, not to that extent, maybe, but with, with CPoA and the city, right? That, that was, that's my experience I've had. And so, uh, that, you know, of course, the contract is a little different, so it took a lot longer, uh, many times. So, I'm glad to hear that it went, you know, so well. Uh, one of my questions I have with this is, we have special assignment, or assignments, I guess, listed on there, JET and CPO, can you tell me, what are those positions?
The jet officers, it's the jail extraction team.
Oh, okay.
So, those are the guys, whenever we have an inmate with the, with the shank, and, or, or what we could call a shank, which is like a knife or a weapon, uh, you know, bunker down in a cell. Then what we do is we activate our, our, our jail extraction team, and so, uh, they put on special equipment, and then we, you know, we give them several commands to drop the weapon, get on, get on the floor, and if they don't, then we activate the jet team, and they go in there, and they have to do what they have to do to.
On the sword team in the federal prisons.
Yeah, special reaction team, uh, jail extraction team, we use jail extraction team here. So, they get just a little bit more, because they are putting the harms away. And what was the other one?
CPL?
Uh, corporal pay.
Oh, that's the corporal, okay.
Yeah, so these are the guys that, um, when we do have new people coming in, uh, they, they get, uh, you know, on the job training, so then we put them side by side for, uh, almost two months with, uh, with an individual. So, they're constantly with the corporal, which is kind of like their FTO, CTO, so they're side by side the whole time, so, hey, if you have any questions, ask your corporal, ask your, your training officer, so, the, you know, that's the, the process that, that we follow in the jail and on the field.
And, um, like investigators, if, whatever their, um, their rank is, and that's what they get, do they get anything special for that?
Investigators fall under sergeants.
Okay.
So, uh, that, that's what, that's what they're paid.
They'll get that pay then.
They get that base pay, and then they get supplemental pay.
And then we also have a certificate pay, and, uh, there's two, uh, sections for that. Uh, one is, is, uh, for, for peace officers, and, uh, uh, the county did add, uh, $400 to the master, so now they get $2,200. Uh, advance was 1,800, uh, intermediate, uh, they got an additional 200, and then basic, they got an additional 100. Uh, the jail license certificate on this go-around, we didn't, we didn't, uh, ask, uh, for any for them, but, um, you know, we were focused on trying to get that base pay to get people, you know, in the door, so we can, you know, and that's, that's really what we need, is just, you know, more people. Uh, but those are some other items.
And so, what if one of your officers say they have, um, they've worked up from the jail up into, like, say Patrol Division or whatever, so do they, can they earn both pay? Can they get a jailer, or do they have to be actively in that position?
The way it is now, they get whichever one of the two is highest.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
They only get one, but they get the higher one.
They get the higher one, okay. So, there is some movement, and, and I appreciate what the judge has, has done in working on this and the oversight, and I agree, you know, moving up is better, and after many years of just flat-out stagnation. And my concern is, you know, on social media, uh, you know, getting tagged, or, you know, we're getting called out that, you know, we're not doing enough, and I, and that's fine, but when people bring up that, hey, Chick-fil-A is paying more than we can in certain positions, that is really concerning. That, I mean, we should have a baseline, even for our correction officers, that are more than what you can find at some restaurants. I mean, you want to talk, I mean, and you know, you worked there, you're, I mean, you've worked up through it.
Believe me, Commissioner, I hear it every day.
And, and it's, it's, it's like, that's why we get into the position we are with, with vacancies, is because we get people that come in, and they can get paid better in a safer environment somewhere else. And it's not just other law enforcement agencies, like you mentioned, I mean, that is part of the case for some, but you can go anywhere, many other places to find a better pay. And I know it's got to be the passion, it's got to be your calling to that, but, uh, I can't imagine why, you know, that we would, that we don't lose more, uh, employees.
And we have a mechanism in place, it's up to the elected official, however, um, you know, and that they can bring somebody in at a higher rate, because we have officer one, two, and three. So, if the elected official so chooses, and they have, you know, the, the experience, it's up to that elected official to, to bring him in at a higher rate.
Plug him in.
And plug him in at a higher rate, there, they can do that, it's, you know, we.
They have some discretion.
They have some discretion to bring him in at a higher rate now.
Subject to qualifications.
Subject to qualifications, and ultimately up to the elected official. So, if the elected official chooses not to bring that person in at a higher rate, I mean, as far as the union's concerned, I mean, we did our job, because we, we provided that into our contract. But if the elected official doesn't want to bring him in at a higher rate, then there's really nothing that.
And so, that, that's up to the, to the sheriff, or to even to the constable level?
Right.
Okay.
And they have that, they have the authority to do that, it's in the contract, but ultimately, it's, it's up to them to decide that.
The only, and I think that raises the issue about the only other facet of this, it's a little more, uh, improved, I guess, um, is the article pertaining to what we call the Bill of Rights, which is the procedural rights pertaining to disciplinary process. We elaborated that a little more, we had to sync it up with the existing civil service rules, um, but that one, that's why we have the sheriff and the constable sign this as well, because they're basically agreeing that they will follow the civil service rules and the applicable labor provisions pertaining to disciplinary process. And that kind of streamlines that process and homogenizes it throughout the county. I think it's a very good risk management tool, and makes the county attorney's job easier, uh, as far as, um, handling cases before the civil service admission. Uh, several years ago, we actually had, um, I worked with the county attorney to update the civil service rules, because the, when we first started, the rules did not contemplate a collective bargaining process. So, we had to modify those rules in order to recognize that on some points, there's an interface with the labor agreement, specifically the Bill of Rights. So, all of that work has been done, it's very, kind of stitched together, uh, very well. Um, to me, a measure of a good contract is that you don't have any contract grievances that go to the arbitration. And I don't think we have had one contract grievance out of Noises County. There has been step one, step two processes where, you know, it's like, oh, okay, this isn't right, but it, they've all gotten worked out at the lower levels.
And, and we try very hard, uh, like, when I became president, I tried very hard to go to the sheriff, or to elected official, and say, hey, let's, let's, let's hash this out. I, I hate filing contract grievances, uh, we try to resolve it at the lowest level possible, and, you know, just figure out internally, and then, of course, if it doesn't work, then we have the mechanism in place to file agreements. But, like Rick said, uh, under our watch, we haven't had any, uh, contract grievances filed. If you look at, like, yeah, and if you look at the, like, the fire department, or like, the police, they're probably like in the 20 or 30, sometimes even 40 grievances, and that's a lot. So, we try to avoid that, because they're very costly, too.
Thank you.
So, I'm ready to answer any other questions.
Thank you, and I'm ready to call on Commissioner Gonzalez.
I have a question here. You know, I, I still have a concern on the entry level, it might be part of the bargaining thing, but how are we going to recruit somebody at that level? And I thought there was something that's very important, when you're offering somebody a job, and they see 30,000, 31,000 versus 35,000, I mean, that's, that's where we really, really miss the recruitment, when they see that number, sir.
Unfortunately, Commissioner, the cadets, they're not included in the collective.
I, I, I just said that, hold on, I just said that. I know they're not, you know, I know they're not, but, you know, I think it's up to us, maybe as commissioners, to say, wait a minute, you know, how can we hire somebody at 31,000? I mean, why would anybody want to be a correctional officer at 31,000? You know, and I would, and this is where I, I'm concerned also, and maybe I'm reading the wrong form, but I got this form here, I guess you gave us, I wasn't lucky enough to get this one here, you just gave me today. But, but, you know, I, um, and I'm looking at it, and, and maybe I'm, I'm wrong what I'm looking here, but I think from year one to last year, to the last year of the contract, the people in the, from the sergeant on down are, are increasing $4,000. From the lieutenant on up, they're increasing 6,000, 7,000, 8,000, so we're still, we, I mean, we're still sad at the top, you know? So, uh, I mean, do we actually take care of the bottom ones or not? I mean, I, you know, when I see the difference of that, I'm concerned, because the ones in the bottom are the ones who really should be taken care of, like you say. So, I don't know how, I mean, I didn't, maybe I need to read this chart now, but I didn't have it, so.
Well, I think the, to answer your question, Commissioner, on the cadets, I mean, we don't bargain for them, because we're not legally able to bargain for them. We can only bargain for the ones that are covered by law. You, you are free in your budget process to do what you think, you know, what the court determines is, is correct. You ask, what is the, why would somebody take that job? Well, they usually take it, because that's a position that you're going to be in it at most a year, and then you start to get the benefits of the negotiated contract. And so, it's sort of a somewhat delayed, uh, investment, but, but that is the attraction. Now, you know, we can't at the table address other labor economics issues involving the cadets, because we're just legally not able to, uh, we, we have it in here, because it's a reference point, but, you know, really, the draw from our standpoint in terms of, uh, keeping people who do go in, you know, is to, to beef up those entry levels, which we've done.
The other thing is, I wish we had a workshop before this, because we just come in today, and we could have voted on it, right, instead of being here all.
But, but I want to emphasize, because this is definitely my first time as well, but the, the process, and Rick, I really want you to address this, because it came up from multiple commissioners, and that is, is that.
Let me finish.
Okay, but we have a collective bargaining law approach, and that was something that was set, so there's no workshop that's required. In other words, we don't do it that way, under the law. I didn't create that law.
We've done it before, so have we been breaking the law, or what?
Not in workshop, we, you've gone to executive session, we've never done it as a workshop, that I remember. It's been an executive session, maybe?
Yeah.
That's not a workshop, that's different.
Here's what's happening when an executive session.
Behind doors, let's, let's put it behind, right?
Yeah, but not to talk about fiscal.
Right, right.
To talk about legal issues.
Right.
Right.
Legal issues, and fiscal is not a legal issue. I mean, it has a legal issue only in that Chapter 174 does have a minimum floor that you have to satisfy. So, I have briefed you in closed session, in prior negotiations, on the, on what that floor is, and what you need to do to do it. But fiscal, like, the way we're talking here, does not qualify for closed session, so that's why we're not in closed session.
But some does, and some don't, right?
No.
No, no fiscal at all.
Any legal stuff does, right?
Legal aspects of the bargaining process can legitimately be talked about.
There's a portion that does, which is legal, right?
I'm sorry?
If it's legal, it does.
If it has a legal advice component, you, you can go to closed session. This, what we're talking about now, has no legal component.
Now, the other question I have on this, here, when it says peace officer certification, jailer certification, assignments, is that already added into, or that's a next, added into the, what we're looking at here as far as the, the overall?
That's an additional supplement, uh, on top of the, the salary that you see?
So, we haven't added that, so that has to be added over the 1.1 million?
It's rolled into, it's calculated.
Includes it all.
It's in it.
It's already, it's already all included?
It's all included, sir.
It doesn't say.
Anything that costs money, any aspect of this that costs money has been rolled into the calculations.
And again, what you're, what you're seeing, and I want to emphasize this, because it always bothers me when we, we always are trying to get the information that helps you make the best informed decision. I don't want anyone to get the impression that you're not getting the full packet. What you're seeing here is the internal working documents of an auditor working with the chief negotiator to get you to your packet. There's nothing secret about what we do here. The reason it's not in here is because this is the backup documentation. It's like looking at your scratch paper before you put your final presentation together. This is nothing, it does look a lot better than my scratch paper because it's in an Excel spreadsheet, but it's nothing more than, you're, you're not, you're not losing anything. And it's really important that we understand how we've done it before and how we're doing it now, because I am trying to improve this process. I'm, that's my whole essence of my life right now, I'm obsessed. I'm obsessed with improving this county, I've been told that on a morning basis by Doug Allison, I'm obsessed with it.
We just, believe me, we
Yeah.
Help you out too.
But I want to make sure that you, that we know that we're doing it right and that I'm making sure that we're doing it right. Because I don't want us to have a situation where somebody says, we didn't get the right info.
And I would point out further, Judge, that all of the backup material, proposals that were tendered by the county, the attendance sheets of each of the meetings, proposals tendered by the county team, by the association, all of that is public document.
Correct.
Okay, now, we don't want to bury you with it, uh, you know, we're bringing you a end product. There are some working papers that, yes, you know, give you some additional information. But if we were to bring all of the proposals and everything that we exchanged across, I mean, we'd have a stack this high, okay?
Right.
Because in our folder, it's like this high. Yeah, I mean, I have a notebook that's like this, okay, so. Somebody wants to see that, have at it, but I'm not saying, this is the boiled down
I think he has another question.
Let me go to the next question, I guess, and, and this is, I mean, as long as we're taking care of the bottom, I'm, I'm, I'm for it, man, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm you know, I'm, I'm always preaching for the bottom, for the choir in the bottom, right? Because uh, and when I see down on the top getting fetter, that really bothers me, you know, and, and I hope it's not the case here, but, you know, maybe I'm not an auditor, I'm not a numbers person, but, you know, hopefully I'm wrong. Uh, okay, we're, let me ask you this, this for, for the purpose of it. Uh, the code enforcement officers or peace officers, are they not included in the collective bargaining? I mean, why wouldn't they be included?
I don't know. Code enforcement? Because they don't qualify uh under the definition of a police officer under chapter one seventy-four.
They're certified police officers.
They're deputies, they're deputy constables.
The statute is specific.
The statute is specific about who is a police officer, and I will say that what, what is a little difficult to understand sometimes is that the tur, the, the definition of the term in the statute elaborated on by the courts, um, through, and there's like four or five cases out there. Some out of the fourth court, some out of the eighth court, some out of the fourth court, that basically define who is a quote, police officer for bargaining purposes. When this started back in the eighties, only municipal police officers were covered by this law. Over time, the courts found that sheriff's deputies were covered. Initially, jailers were not covered, it took a different court case out of El Paso to find that jailers were covered. And so, and then the very last um unfolding of that was by the Supreme Court saying, constables are covered. So I think that we have seen the outer limit of who is covered. Um, and so, yeah, there are code enforcement people out there in the cities, and they're not quote, police officers for purposes of bargaining. And I think even the association agrees with us.
Do we need to change their title, maybe?
Well, no, I think the only way that that could possibly happen is if you move them from public works under the command of the sheriff.
Yeah.
And then, so if you would do that, then they'd be assigned to a sheriff's office with the uh job assignment of code enforcement.
But then they'd have to be T. Cole certified, they would have to become
Right.
Cole certified, so you're, you're really, yeah, they have, code is a type of enforcement, but it's not a police enforcement in the traditional sense of the term, that's why they're not
Well, I want to, again, thank you guys for all this work that y'all put into this, it's a lot of work and I really appreciate it. And I know that the judge, I know she's always on top of things too, and, you know, if she's there, I know some things are going the right way, I hope. You know, but uh, thank you for everything, and I just have questions, you know, and I, I just want to say, I wish I, I had, could ask them before, but, you know, again, thank you very much, thank you for the whole team, I don't know who was in the team, but thank you very much.
Let's, let's acknowledge your team, uh, Joe, I know you have, at least I can see.
Guys, if you want to stand up. Uh, I have Robert Collins, he's been with the department for twenty-eight years. Uh, raise your hand, Mr. Collins, and then I have Gary Thurman, he's been with the county almost eighteen years. Then I have Sergeant Carpenter, he's been with the county about ten years, and I've been with the county for eleven years.
You all passed the seven-year itch, that's good.
I don't know how we did it.
That's good. Oh, yeah, eight years.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. I, I want us to, um, I am going to call the question, but I think Commissioner Gonzalez raised such an important issue, and I'm not really sure. I got the answer to my satisfaction, so I'm going to try to answer it, and I'd like for you to suggest whether I've made a, a fair and accurate statement. And that is, is that I think that the people at the bottom of the rung, so to speak, you know, in the tiers that are indicated, did, did, we did make a major effort to improve their lives with this pay increase. And what you see is an effort, and if we had a compensation study, which we don't, that we actually analyzed everybody. And sadly, we're not doing well in comparison to the other counties and from the highest to the lowest. It's not like it's just unequal in the lower um classifications, right? It's just unequal everywhere, is that, is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am, and if you look at, uh, at the contract, the line officer's got an eight percent the first year versus the sergeant and above, like, I'm a sergeant, I got, I'm getting less than what the line officer's getting, so, and, and I'm okay with that, you know what I mean? Because at the end of the day, I want, I want to succeed, I want to move the county forward. So the sergeants and above, we're taking a, a three percent less than the troops on, on the ground. And that's because we want to fill those vacancies and we want to
Right.
Want to move the county forward, so I, I agree with
I just want to make sure that we all, that that was, because it was really important to not only Commissioner Gonzalez, but to all the commissioners that we, that we, we elevated that which we were really not in parity with, but it was also important to say, but where we do have like cop, like for example, in the, uh, let's say, you know, chief deputy, for example, or a captain, we don't want to lose those good people either. And those people were not in parity either in counties that are similarly situated.
They're still not.
And they're still not, and they're not even close, like, we didn't even get out of the bottom rung. So for, so I guess what I'm saying is, is that to answer the question, Rick, can you help us, make us feel a little more comfortable that, because he makes a good point, that it appears if you're looking at this without the context of where we sit, that maybe that the, the top people still are getting elevated, but we're doing so at a rate that's commensurate. And that the, but we made the most movement for those people, which was the, what, what I'm looking at on the screen.
Before, before Rick addresses that, I just want to point out that if you look at the entry level, right?
Yes.
Which is thirty-five thousand.
Are you looking on our screen, so we can, okay?
Um, at the end of the four years, they're going to be making forty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty.
Right.
So you have addressed the
Thank you. She's talking about le, le, number two on the screen, uh, a pay group two on the screen.
There's all okay right here.
Yeah.
Well, and I, you know, your question, let me answer your question this way, because it really goes to the nuances of bargaining. And I'm sorry, did you, did you?
No, go ahead, I'll go left. Soon as you finish, Commissioner Vaughn.
Goes to the nuances of the bargaining, here, here's the, here's the problem that, or the issue that really both sides have, okay? We have from your fiscal folks, your auditor, we have some idea of what we can work with, what we can responsibly work with and propose to you, okay? We can do that. Yeah, okay, everybody agrees, you know, we really would like to be higher at the front end, and this year, we'd like to put more money up here up front, okay? And we could do that, but here's the thing, this is really the association's problem, but in a way, it's our problem, which is, this has to be ratified by the membership. If we, you know, load these contracts in one rank or one level too much, and don't put anything in here for anybody else, okay? They can't get it ratified, all right? So, you know, it's easy for us to say, well, I know our problem, that's your problem, well, that's not really true. It is our problem indirectly, because if we can't get a ratified contract, then we don't, can't get a contract. So the negotiations that happen, it's like, okay, let's put as much as we can within what we have, and then let's sort of spread the rest out as we can. The reason that the Excel tool that the auditor has developed is really great is that, yeah, the upper ranks here are getting less percentage, but because they, base is already higher, their dollar value is the same. So when you start doing across-the-board percentages across all ranks, what you end up getting is rank spread. You, you, because the dollars are different, the percentage might be the same, but the dollars are different. And so by fine tuning it this way, then the upper level people are going to get money, they're not going to get the same percentage, but they are going to get money. And then, you know, we, so we set the anchor point in the first year to address the issues. And then we did go to and across the board, three, what is it?
Three.
Four, three.
Four, four, three, three.
Four, three, three. And today, in these, in these days, let me tell you, four, three, three, is pretty darn good. The days of six, six, and six from the nineties, that's gone. We, you know, we used to do six, 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 that, that's gone, it's been gone for a while. This is pretty good, and it's within a, you know, an amount of money over four years that your auditor reasonably believes you can do. It's, you're going to have some hard decisions about it, but it really, so I think the union is convinced that we were in good faith.
And, and the other The other thing is that you can't have, uh, because what's going to happen is you're going to have supervisors that are making less money than, than the line officers. And in order to attract good supervisors, because they make a lot of decisions, you need to have, you, you also need to kind of build a level between the line officer and the supervisor, you can't have the, the line officer making more than the supervisor, and so
We don't have that problem right now.
We're getting there, so, uh, so we need to maintain those gaps in place, because if not, you know, then
So that, so we paid attention to the gaps between ranks and make sure that they were
There was sufficient separation.
Balance, that there was sufficient separation, that there was a balance, that we were still within our, you know, informal budget. Uh, and that we were spreading the available benefits and dollars around within the bargaining group so that everybody is getting something.
Got it.
Okay, I mean, I, and that's, that's really the, I will say, the art of negotiating as opposed to the technical side of negotiating, the art is finding that balance. I feel that we have found that balance with the association in this cycle. And so, you know, as your chief negotiator, I would like to kind of finish my commission
Yes.
By recommending to you to approve this contract, ratify it, you know.
Thank you.
Sign it, and let's be done, and I will be, I will be done.
And we have a question from Commissioner Vaughn at this time.
Okay, I have a couple of comments, uh, Judge, you clarified pretty much what I was going to ask, because I was concerned about the lower and the middle management, because to me, that's the most important right now, because if, if they are not incentivized, they're not going to want to go up the ranks, and we have to take care of them. But one of my biggest concerns is the cadets, that's not your fault that they're not in the collective bargaining. But that is an issue that this court's going to have to look at, and we need to think about it when we're approving this, because we are short of officers, we are paying overtime. And if we don't address that and make sure there's some money to cover that, I have a meeting with someone from Bluntor after this because of robberies. We don't have enough officers, and this court's going to have, we need to add some officers this year. So I think we need to make sure that we have some money set aside for that. I'm so supportive of you guys, and I, I want you to get what you can, and this is something, it's like the judge said, it's a start.
We're going in the right direction.
We are. Dale, I would ask you again, because when we vote on this, we have to make sure we have the money to cover it. So you're talking about four years down the road, and you have not yet really, what you said didn't convince me that we have the money, so could you go over that again?
Well, when we started working a budget for the, the four years, we can't really look at the four years, we, we, we kept the increase of the four years the same as the last three contracts, no more than three million of the four years. Now, we know there will be some changes because people come and go, and so, so the total amount of three million, it won't, won't probably be that way. Our, my concern and our concern should be this, this first fiscal year, which we pretty much assured, it'll be about a million dollar increase for, for this, based on the percentage we're doing. Now, as the judge is saying, our valuations have gone up, however, evaluations will assess to the effective rate and give you some adjustment, the increase would be on new property. And right now, we're working with appraisal district and, and I'm really concerned of how they're evaluating, it can be anywhere from six hundred million to a billion dollars worth of new property, and a billion dollars of new property brings us close to a million, a million to two million dollars worth of additional money.
Okay.
So we might be able to cover this with the new property increases that we have. Uh, once we get the numbers in, we're, we're, we had some numbers, but then the appraisal said there was an error and some other adjustments, so I can't give you the total effect yet, but we know there's going to be probably a million dollar increase in our revenue just for new property.
Okay, and you're saying you might, worst case scenario, if you don't, how are you going to cover it?
It goes through reserves.
How much do you have in reserves?
Twenty-one million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just want to make sure when we vote on it, it would be terrible to vote on it and we can give it to you.
All questions?
Okay. I think we're done with the questions, and uh, I'm going to go ahead and call the question. And all those in favor of ratifying the, um, actually, it's approving the authorization for myself to sign as county judge to execute the collective bargaining labor agreement between Noyes County and the Noyes County Sheriff's Association, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, okay? Thank you so much, Rick, well, job well done, thank you. Thank you, Joe, and to, and to all the deputies that are here with us for, for everything.
Pleasure working with you.
Thank, thank you, as they say, don't call us, we'll call you. You know what I mean, Rick? Okay, um, we have an item, uh, number three, to discuss and approve authorizing the county judge to sign the economically disadvantaged counties program affidavit for Tex- dot to participate in the upcoming right-of-way state highway two eighty-six, Farm Road forty-three to South two four four four. Juan, how efficient can you be? This is an affidavit that I need to sign, that's
Yes, ma'am, it's a standard
And it's a standard affidavit, I've looked it over, and I'm satisfied and would like the commissioners to, uh, for a motion and ask Juan any questions after the motion. In a second, please.
Second.
A motion in a second, uh, is there any discussion for Juan with regards to this particular affidavit that, that needs my signature? I'd like to point out that while I, I enjoy giving us opportunities to access the state of Texas funds, it doesn't give me any privilege to say that we are an economically disadvantaged county.
And, and Judge, the affidavit is for, I, I did put in the exhibit from Tex- dot, state, state highway two eighty-six, and that is the exhibit, uh, it's the one crossing, uh
Okay.
I mean, FM
The FM two four four, four, two, four, four, four?
Forty-three, and, and South of two forty, two forty-four, forty-four. So this is the first exhibit that they showed, just kind of did a quick presentation that they provided to us. Um, and those, those are the limits, and of course, it's for the right-of-way, and then that's just the other drawing that shows the overpass on forty-three.
And you're satisfied, as an engineer, you've looked this over and this is appropriate?
Yes, ma'am, this is preliminary, so
Oh, good, we get another bite at it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's good. And I know I pester you about this, but it's, they pester me on email almost every day. I noticed that we were coming up on that public comment period for twenty-twenty for Tex- dot, we're all good? Okay, and this is kind of part of that, it's that vision of the twenty-twenty. I said twenty-twenty, that's wrong, it's a It's the twenty-year plan starting in twenty-twenty. Okay, all right, uh, hearing, um, a motion in a second and having the opportunity to review the documents, like to call the question. All those in favor of authorizing me to sign on behalf of the county, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, thank you, Juan. Okay, at this time, um, uh, item number four is discuss and consider approval of the project proposal in response to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife letter dated, I believe it's May fifteenth, uh, twenty nineteen, that invited this county to um, um, submit a proposal relating to the design, well, actually, invited this county to make the design, well, actually, invited this county to make a proposal. This particular item, uh, commissioners, is related to the design and construction of an observation deck at Horace Caldwell Pier in Port Aransas, Texas. And at this time, what I think I'd like to do is, is give you a little bit of background and then also remind everybody that I have a, at least seven different, um, speakers here today and, and when we get to you speakers, I'll just give you a little bit of housekeeping. Maybe some of you come here all the time, maybe some of you, this is your first time, welcome. Uh, the way it works is when I ask and call for your name, if you'll approach the podium and then, um, if it's okay, since there's several of you, um, I won't cut you off, there won't be a big buzzer, but I would like you to limit your comments to the appropriate three minutes, which is our standard rule. And, um, there'll be plenty of time for, for good discussion and I consider all seven of you, I'm certain, good resources, uh, to answer questions if any of the commissioners or myself should have them. So, hearing that, let me ask that commissioners, um, direct their attention to a copy of a proposal that will look a little bit graphically prettier when we send it downstairs to, to the printer, if it is the will of this court to do so and, um, for final submission to the United States Fish and Wildlife Service, which many of you know is a, a department of, uh, the interior. And, um, based on a letter and many discussions that we've had, you all know that on May 15th of this year, well, May 13th of this year, I traveled to Washington, D.C. along with the team county, uh, employees, including Tyner Little and Scott Cross, Coastal Parks Director. And after good discussion with, um, the Grants Department and of U.S. Fish and Wildlife, within 48 hours, they had sent an official letter to our county inviting us, and I'd like to stress that, inviting us to make a proposal that would deal with the following items. A detailed description of our proposal, a timeline for construction, a detailed budget, letters of support, federal compliance, uh, protocols, any possible conservation educational benefits, and any county internal controls that we could, uh, apply. The concept in, in, in a nutshell was that, that the county was invited to request the removal of the federal nexus that occurred at Bob Hall Pier, that occurs at Bob Hall Pier Observation Pavilion as the result of a 2007 grant. And therefore, uh, the proposal requests the removal of this federal nexus by constructing a comparable substantially like-kind facility at an alternative location, which has been, uh, design, uh, which has been delineated as the Horace Caldwell Pier within I.B. McGee Park in Port Aransas, Texas, a hurricane-affected, Hurricane Harvey-affected area. In addition, um, it's been noted that this particular pavilion will have an enhanced educational curriculum specifically for native species as well as habitat. So, that's the nature of why you have this proposal in front of you. Um, anything that requires this much thinking power on my part gets an acronym. It's my way of reminding myself what it is that I'm doing. And for the past six months, I've been, uh, working on the concept of Restore. For those of us that deal in the coastal world, we love the word Restore because we know Restore means a lot of grant access money, uh, coming from the feds. This is, uh, Restore Version Two. Um, it's, uh, it stands for, um, oh, well, let me just tell you, I've got my little acronym here, um, Research, Education. S is for, um, I don't know why I'm, I'm, I made it up. Here it is. Research, Education, Safety, Technology, Observation, Resiliency, and Environment. And the reason I dubbed that Restore is because I wanted this project to meet all of those types of precepts. And I think the proposal commissioners that you have in front of you definitely addresses research, it addresses educational curriculum, I've incorporated safety because of our riptide awareness program. It involves technology coming from our own county parks. It's really meant primarily as an observation deck, a free park amenity for both locals and the hundreds of thousands of tourists that we receive, uh, annually. In addition, it's a resiliency program because we are a resilient community and a county and there's no better example of that than Port Aransas, Texas. And finally, and most importantly, the United States Fish and Wildlife Service is dedicated to making certain that we as citizens understand and protect our environment, particularly as it applies to native species and habitat. And so, for all the reasons I've stated above, the proposal is incredibly comprehensive and I'd like to take the time to acknowledge Maria and Natalie from Grants who worked tirelessly with myself and a team, uh, to really make certain that all of the, uh, bullet points that the United States Fish and Wildlife addressed with us were met. There's some wonderful pictures and photos and I'm really picky, so we're actually going to make them a little bit, uh, even nicer and they're all going to have citations. So, um, what we're asking at this time, commissioners, is for you to approve this proposal being sent to United States Fish and Wildlife at this time for their consideration to allow us to change the federal nexus from one spot to another. By doing so, I believe it meets the criteria that we are charged with here as commissioners and that is making certain that the taxpayers' dollar is adequately protected and that we are also good stewards of our environment. I think this meets both goals. One of the things that was absolutely critical for us to discover is how this would never, ever happen again. And that's what that compliance piece is. And so, we are internally strengthening our compliance, not only with our external auditors who will be reviewing, obviously, major grants, but internal audits so that this commissioner's court will have oversight and authority to make certain that as these grants come forward, we have a regular oversight process of what those deliverables are. I think by doing so, uh, we not just, not only strengthen, um, coastal parks, but we strengthen our awareness, uh, as, um, as these major grants have a lot of compliance components and we want to make sure that we meet them. I want to also, um, address finally the, the fiscal nature of, of what it is that we're doing. You'll notice that, um, in the program, in the program, in the, um, in the proposal, that the, uh, cost associated with building such a structure has been estimated by Public Works at 12% of the total, uh, I'm sorry, Juan. The design and structure has been, um, represented at 12% of construction costs. So, when you see the total of $750,000 plus a contingency fee for ADA of an additional $100,000, that does not include the design and structure that we, structural engineering that we already own as a county and have been given a value of approximately 100 and, I can't remember, $7,000. So, we were not haphazard about how we came about with making certain that we had the dollars for this project. We worked with Public Works to get a cost estimate based upon the design and structural engineering that we owned. We also made certain that we had, um, letters of support as was recommended by U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And I'd like to read in, um, just, I'm not going to read, although, I'm not going to read any of the letters, I'm just going to read for you, um, who we received letters of support for this exact proposal. U.S. Fish and Wildlife here, their Texas field office, the Coastal Bend Council of Governments representing over 16 counties, the city of Port Aransas, Port Aransas Texas Parks and Rec Department, Port Aransas Mustang Island Tourism Bureau and Chamber of Commerce, Port Aransas ISD, the United Sta-, uh, Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce, UTMSI, a world-class research facility and branch of the University of Texas at Austin, PIBA, Padre Island Business Association, Flower Bluff Business Association, Flower Bluff ISD, Federal Steel Sales, Corpus Christi, Texas, Debbie Noble, uh, North Padre Island resident. I included anybody who actually mailed me a letter, so. Coastal Bend Bays and Estuaries Program has indicated, um, to our office that their letter will be forthcoming in time for mailing. As you know, they represent, uh, the National Estuary Program, only 18 in the country. And finally, the Nuasis County Board of Park Commissioners is also sending a letter, um, per email to my office. At this time, um, I will, um, entertain, uh, the, uh, folks that we have here to discuss the agenda item and in no particular order, I'm taking it as they came in and signed up. The first one is Ms. May Nordone.
Does the judge want me to title?
I'll just allow, uh, Tyner, if you don't mind, help me be the record, I mean, the, the keeper of time. And again, don't, we'll be a little liberal, but in the interest of time, we'll, we'll give you a little fair warning, May.
I did try to edit while I was waiting.
Okay, fair enough. Welcome.
Well, good morning, Judge Canales and commissioners. My name is Medida May Nordone. I am half-owner of Michael Mays Beachside Bar and Grill. And I just wanted to tell you a little bit about myself and how I became concessioner at, um, Bob Hall Pier. Also, to just kind of speak on behalf, I'm going to be kind of geared more towards, obviously, thinking that, or hoping that we will go in the direction of building in Port Aransas, the new observation deck and saving Michael Mays, which is my restaurant where the observation deck was originally built. I was born and raised here on Corpus Christi. I graduated from Ray High School and went on to Delmar College where I received my associate's degree. In 1982, I moved away as I married a naval pilot and as a Navy wife, I got to live all over the country and see some wonderful places along the coast. We moved back to Corpus Christi in 99 where I started a farmer's insurance agency 15 years ago on the island. At that time, I got divorced and I've been a single mom ever since. While on the island, I was honored to be, hold several leadership roles, even being president of the Padre Island Business Association for three years. During my tenure, I experienced several, um, ribbon cuttings there at Bob Hall Pier with several concessionaires that preceded us. It seemed like they were having a ribbon cutting almost every year. I remember thinking, wow, why can't these businesses make it here? This is such an amazing location overlooking the Gulf of Mexico. If someone would just put a little bit of money in it, have good food, and make it a fun and fa-, a fun family atmosphere, this place would be a goldmine. Well, as luck would have it, the opportunity presented itself seven years ago for me to have the opportunity to become a concessionaire. I called up Michael McGrath, who owned Fun Trackers at the time, which I insured, as he had been wanting to partner with me on a business on Padre Island, but I kept telling him no, until this opportunity, the place I'd only dreamed of, came about. He, of course, said yes and I quickly went to work on the perfect business plan. I researched the demographics, tourist, bird enthusiasts. What was I going to do to make Michael Mays a success where others couldn't? I wanted it to be a destination where everyone wants to come and continue coming and where cherished memories were made and remembered. We have, our, we already have one of the best views in town as we are the only establishment of its kind on the entire Texas Gulf Coast. I knew we had to have good food and I hired Chef David, who was trained at one of the best culinary schools in California and had worked for upscale private clubs all over the country. If you've never been to Michael Mays, you should come because you would agree, our food is pretty awesome. We have a very successful brunch and due to success on Sundays, we added Saturday as well. We, we did also build a really nice bar area where guests could come out of the heat to enjoy the views, have an appetizer, enjoy a drink while waiting for a table, or even catch their favorite game on TV. We do have acoustic singers for entertainment during the weekends and evenings and Wednesday and Friday nights, we have karaoke, which has become a family favorite. We have become the place to host different events such as high school reunions, birthday and retirement parties, wedding receptions, bridal and baby showers, graduations, memorial services, fishing tournaments, pilot readings, Navy commander parties. And yes, we've even become a place for first dates and wedding proposals. We've also hosted many charity events. For example, most recently, Commissioner Chesney's Sandcastle Run, which benefits children with diabetes. We have also donated thousands of dollars to local charities and organizations. We have become that destination where memories are made, which was always my goal. We are a destination not only for Nuasis County, Corpus Christi, North Padre Island, the Gulf Coast, but I think the state of Texas. Everything we've added to Michael Mays from the dining area, bar, TVs, live music, gift shop, were all outlined in our business plan that we submitted. I was, I have given each of you a copy of that original business plan for your review. I've also given you an agreement of the, um, original contract that we signed when we took over as concessionaire. After our five years, which we just had last year, we had an agreement amendment where there was a, a couple of changes made due to the U.S. Fisheries and Wildlife coming up or issues that are, have come up. I've also given you for the entire time that we've been a concessionaire for, now we're, we're celebrating our sixth year being open on, in August, our revenues, which we have to date, now have a total, let's see, kind of got it off key so I can get ahead of myself and not be so long. Um, let's see, I'll get, almost $650,000 after we pay this month's check that we paid in total rents to the county. I know that most of you, or I believe all of you to the best of my knowledge, commissioners and Judge Canales, were not in office when the observation deck was built or three years later when we took over as concessionaire. So, I wanted to explain some of the confusion that I've not only read about in the news, but also when I've reviewed some of your sessions. We were not the original concessionaire when this second, second structure for the observation was built. Barnacle Bills was the concessionaire at the time and he also used the observation deck like we have for his dining room with a small bar and waitstaff. We were awarded the concessionaire contract in April of 2013, but due to delays and renovations for the original building, we didn't open our doors until August 9th. Our contract that we have is between us, the concessionaire, and the Nuasis County Board of Park Commissioners, also known as the Park Commissioners, as there's been some confusion, confusion that the contract has been between us and the county commissioners. We are not a bar located on a county property that just sells alcohol to the public. We are a family restaurant that sells alcohol to those who would like to enjoy a beverage while dining, just like any other restaurant. Our sales for the past 12 months, and I've given you a copy of that as well, and if they are broken down, we have our sales at 65% food sales, 32% alcohol sales, and 3% gift shop, which we just opened a couple of months ago. So, as you can see, we sell double the food over the alcohol sales in our restaurant. When I submitted our business plan for review, the board to become the concessionaire, I did make several cha-, or Michael and I made several changes to the previous contracts that had been submitted or in force. We did that for several reasons. As a successful business owner, I knew what it would take to make Michael Mays the great place that it has become today. First of all, we were missing for, uh, the first two months, June and July, which are the busiest months of the summer because we weren't open till August due to the delays and the renovations. Our newly renovated kitchen still didn't get open till November, which was seven months after we signed our contract. We had to run a temporary kitchen out of a food truck with a very limited menu. This delay of loss of revenue was difficult, but we endured. For the first five years, we put back all our revenues to help us stay open year-round and endure the winter months, which the first two were horrible. We have slowly added most of the items outlined in the business plan as we just opened the gift shop this year. I knew any successful business didn't start making a profit until after five years, breaking even.
I just want to make the point, that's well over three minutes. I was trying to get your attention.
Okay, sorry, if you, if you wouldn't mind, just, if you could wrap it up. And you know what? There's going to be lots of questions, so we'll be able to have a, a dialogue that might help fill in the gaps.
Okay, so, basically, the only changes were between the contracts where instead of a fi-, a three-year contract, we did a five-year contract. We increased our minimum, um, base gross rent of, from 6% to 8% of gross sales. We did put it to not exceed 12,000 per month because we were paying the extra 2%. So, this way, we could survive during the summer months and keep us open year-round and also not to kill us in operating costs because with my projections, I knew that we could handle 12,000 a month and we would go over. And, um, just basically that I, I was excited to hear that you guys went in May to D.C. to speak with U.S. Fisheries and Wildlife and were able to come to a compromise. I think it is a win-win situation, not only for us at Michael Mays, but for the county as we can continue to stay open and generate revenue for the county, which helps as well as have a great structure in Port Aransas that all of our community can enjoy.
I just have three short questions. The observation deck, do you allow people to go up there, uh, free? Do they have to make a reservation? Is it, is it completely open and free to the public currently?
Yes, um-
The perimeter?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Actually, um, we were told when we took over, actually by Scott Cross, that it was an observation deck and that it was open and free to the public, that we could not require anybody to purchase- we could not require anybody to purchase anything. We were required to either have a water fountain or provide free water. In fact, if they wanted to bring up their own food, nobody ever does it, but they could. We could not turn away anybody, and we totally agreed to that, and we never have.
And you're willing to continue to do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I've got some other questions, but I'm going to hold in the interest of time.
Just one question.
Absolutely.
You said you give the county 650,000?
Yes.
To the county?
Yes, well, yes, we give it as a part of our rents. We do 8% or we have a 12,000 cap. If you look on this page right here, or the one that has our gross revenues, if you go, it has it broken down by every year. If you go to the last page, it'll show the total revenues of 647,002, so it's almost $650,000, which includes the July rent that we will be paying.
Over the term.
I actually have a spreadsheet too, that, that, that I asked Dale to...
Talk about over the five years.
We've been there this August, well, in a few, like a week, it'll be a total of six years, yes sir. So during that total time since we've opened, we've generated $650,000. And what I was also going to add was that helps kind of contribute towards, we've pretty much almost paid for the new structure, and now with hopefully the Port of Corpus Christi donating their, contributing their $250,000, I feel like it's a, again, a win-win.
And in fact, I'm going to send this to Tyner, so you can send it to everybody, but Barnacle Bills, the number I have, because I just had it through June, was 630-909. Barnacle Bills prior to her, 2010 to 2012, is 64-407. Prior to that, was Pirate's Landing, 29, just March, just six months, and that was 10,888. Prior to that, it was called Ozone Grill, '07 to '08, 25-409-59. Prior to that, it was called the Sunset Grill, '05 to '07, that's $56,682, for a grand total of somewhere, I just did it in my, did a rounding, probably close to $739, $740,000 that we've had from all the concessionaires. And, and even I had trouble with that word, so I decided to look it up in my favorite Webster's dictionary. And it's a terrible word, because all of us that grew up here, I hate to say it, West Side, every time we think about concession, we think about the snow cone trucks, right? But that's not the word. That's just, the word concession is meant like in the formal, in the Queen's English, I give you a concession, I give you a grant to use land for commercial purposes. So maybe in the future, we'll, we'll modify our, our language, but it really is that, not that you're a concessionaire, that's never what you thought or never what you wanted to be, but much more that you, we granted you a concession to use our land, our property, for the purposes of commercial purposes. And I think that was really a good point that was brought up in previous meetings when you weren't here, that hey, this doesn't feel right, and that's because the word doesn't accurately describe. It's not our fault, it just, the word doesn't accurately describe what, what we were, what we were doing. Yes, sir?
What is your, your revenues for the duration of time? I know you gave us 650 in the six years. What was your revenue?
How much are we making?
Yeah, what was your gross revenue?
Like the total? Well, I believe it's right here. If we pull it up on the form I gave you.
It's in this, it's, it's in this...
Is it on your paper?
It's in the last page of the packet you gave us.
Okay, on the, well, that is the gross sales, yes. The gross sales year-to-date, but that does not include July's, which if I were to, I could add July's, because I already know what it is. But it's 9,341,07340. If you add this month's, if you look on page two of the sales report, this was just through yesterday, or the 30th, not through the 31st. If you look at the gross sales for the month of July, it's 376,812. So if you add that, that puts it well over 9.5 million, 9.7.
Tom Troller really gets a nice chunk of that.
Over the six years?
Yes, over the six years. And I might add that I may change in the contract later. Y'all get 8% over everything, even the taxes we pay.
We love it, we love it.
No, I, now, I wish I could say Michael and I have made a million dollars, has not happened.
But, but the most important part is that those are gross sales, right? We just want to make sure that...
Yes, that is gross sales. That is before all of our expenses, all of our taxes. That includes, that includes the taxes. So just for, like, if you were to look, if I were, you know, look at the sales report for the last year, the taxes for just the last 12-year rolling period of 7/29/18 to 7/30/18, it was 2,144,474 for the year, for the last 12 months. 176,622 was just the 8% taxes. That's not including the TABC taxes, the regular taxes, employee taxes, all the other. There's a lot of taxes.
Okay.
Just a quick question for her too, and I, I think I know, but I want to make sure I'm right. How many employees, how many people do you employ in New Oasis, well, in, at your restaurant?
At our highest peak in the summer, it goes as high as 80. Right now, we currently have 66 employees. Many, most of our employees have worked with us from the beginning. We've had them for, there for the long haul.
Do they live all over New Oasis County? Do they live in primarily one area? I'm just curious. Do you know?
Most of them, most, I mean, a lot of them do live on the island. I'd say maybe 50%, Steve? No, less than that, 25% maybe, less than...
15%.
That's my general manager, he knows, he hires and...
Most of them live more in town, like Ford Ocean Drive, Staples, Everhard, Weber, Life, and the store.
So to answer on here, most of them live in town. We do have a, we've had a couple in Port Aransas, as far as even Portland.
Is it?
Oh, yeah.
So it's fair to say, on the average, about 60 employees, up to 80 at the peak? Would that be a fair assessment?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so what I'm going to do in the interest of time, I'm going to keep calling up, just be, if you'll stay for, be a resource, you know, witness for us. In other words, I'm going to allow all commissioners to, to ask questions of anybody that made public comment, but we're just going to keep systematically going through it. So I'm going to call James Pettis at this time.
Just, just to remind you that the agenda item is the project approval, so kind of related to that.
It does.
Right. I don't know what he's going to say. You're, you're giving him some direction?
Right.
Okay, I'm going to give all, everybody who comes forward, direction is that you're here today to make comment about the project proposal that we have to, before us. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you all. So good to see y'all.
Thank you.
Real fast, the, the picture of y'all outside looks like superheroes, y'all rock. I'm James Pettis, born and raised here, Corpus Christi product, and have, have, just recently, in these last four years, about this project, it got me up to come over here. Being in Corpus Christi my entire life, I have not enjoyed the beach like we should have. And what's shocking to me, if you go ask your family members and see how many of them haven't gone to the beach to go see the beach, the Looking Tower's not going to bring them to that pier, that, that pier is, is already a famous pier. But what's crazy is we don't get to enjoy the bucket list city that we live in until four years ago, that I came across Michael Mays. Listen to this, Corpus Christi boy, been living here his whole life, been fishing that beach his whole life, but for the first time, I had a reason to take my family to enjoy what really shows Corpus Christi. And it was on that pier. The pier that I've caught sharks my entire life, but never could sit down and bring my family, because I have family members that don't want to go to the beach. If they're not fishing, why go to the beach? Don't want to go to the beach. Until they realized there was an amazing meal. Took them to have the most amazing drum, wow, amazing drum meal, sitting on top of the Gulf of Mexico. That memory is priceless to only family members that I've had here in Corpus Christi. But I, I went one step further. I went ahead and bought a house on the island. I bought a house on the island because I thought to myself, why do I need to go to Belize? Why do I need to go to Mexico? I've got the freaking bucket list right here. This is Corpus Christi, Texas. Oh, by the way, it's the body of Christ, City of Texas. And the closer we get to the water, your spirit comes loose. So I'm going to invite every one of you. If you haven't had this experience, you're going to come to my house, every one of you. You put on the record the keys to my house. You go over there, you get into the garage, you get into the little golf buggy that I've got in the garage. Within five minutes, you're on White Cat Beach. Turn to the right and look at the amazing Bob Hall Pier, where the sharks, by the way, were caught at San Antonio Sea World, came from that pier. That's a famous pier. That pier, I've been walking that pier since I was a little boy, but I never got to enjoy that pier like I have today. And thank you, May. Thank you, Michael Mays, because for the first time, I got to take my tia, who has lived in this town her whole life, up to 75 years, never went to the beach, never had a reason to. Michael Mays was the reason. Went over there to have a lunch, and I got to enjoy the family. Every visitor that comes to town, stays at my house, I give them the keys so they can get in that golf cart, right straight down to White Cat Boulevard, take a right, and go see that pier. The moment you see the pier, you know what you're looking at. That's who we are.
That's three, Judge.
But for the first time, go up there and have something to eat and be amazed at the city that you live in, that you, that you whack past every day. Talk about stop the smelling the roses, man, stop and walk that pier.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis.
So thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. Megan, you're up. And again, I just want to, if everybody would just at least state if you're for, typically in Austin, when we go testify for something, we say whether we're for a proposal, or against a proposal, or just neutral to be a fact witness for the proposal. It'll help the clerk when they do the minutes and record.
Well, my name is Megan Fury. I'm here in a couple of different capacities. As May mentioned, she was formerly the president of the Padre Island Business Association. I am the current president of the Padre Island Business Association. Thus, my attire is meant to be impactful and not disrespectful, so.
Well noted.
And with all due respect, I do understand that we're here to vote on the Horace Caldwell Pier. The vote of Horace Caldwell Pier does directly impact Michael Mays, which thus the reason that a lot of us are here. As the president of PIBA, I, we have sent a letter, as you had mentioned, we fully support the Horace Caldwell Pier. I think that having two piers is very beneficial to our entire city and our entire county. But having a second pier would leave the opportunity for our island to keep Michael Mays. I'm also the chair of the ambassadors program on the island, and so as ambassadors, we often get asked for recommendations on places to go. And it's a huge, it's a huge thing for our island and for our community to be able to have that gorgeous observation pier. We don't have a whole lot of beachfront places on the island. We do have some bayfront, very limited, but Michael Mays is really our true only beachfront restaurant, and that's so important for our community. The third reason that I'm here is because I am a Realtor on the island. I am a top producer. I'm not saying that to toot my own horn, but I am saying that because that is where I get my livelihood. That is how I feed my family. And when I'm showing property on the island and they want to go to lunch, most of the time, we go to Michael Mays. Or if they ask where they should take their family to lunch or to dinner, we send them to Michael Mays. It is something that is part of our community. It is not just a bar. There are children in there on a daily and nightly basis. There, this young lady sitting over here with the GM, I happen to know she is a fantastic singer. She is amazingly talented, because on a Friday night, she will be there with her dad singing karaoke along with a lot of the other children that are there. Our island doesn't have as much to offer when people are looking for a place to live as some of the other places that we compete with, such as Galveston or South Padre. So we have to have a few selling points aside from our amazing community, which people don't see, they don't feel, until they have a chance to be part of that community. And Michael Mays gives them a chance to be part of that community. So as representation for the Padre Island Business Association, the ambassadors program, and the local island Realtors, I give a strong yes for the Horace Caldwell Pier.
Observation deck, thank you.
Observation.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. The next one is Meredith Darden. Hi, Meredith.
Hi, my name is Meredith Darden. I'm the director of visitor services at Visit Corpus Christi. We are neutral on the proposal. We're just here to speak on behalf of Michael Mays. I've come to the county commissioners court today to provide information on the unique value that Michael Mays brings to the tourism industry in New Oasis County, as it exists in its current location on Bob Hall Pier. So as you all may know, more than 9.9 million visitors visit Corpus Christi annually, and over half of these visitors, 54% to be exact, say that they visit our beaches. 14% report that they go fishing, and 28% love the dining experiences our city has to offer. And I'll be brief and won't go into all of the specifics, as the previous speakers have covered most of the attributes that Michael Mays has. But imagine visitors from our drive markets, from Lubbock, Waco, San Antonio, they're in landlocked destinations, and they bring their family to Corpus Christi to have a vacation, spend their money, drop their sales tax, and sit at Michael Mays, feel the Gulf breeze, watch the fishermen, and enjoy the live music and seafood. Without that, what, you know, what else is there on the bay or on the Gulf front to, to dine? And as you know, the term of Michael Mays is not only that it's a waterfront dining location, but it is on a prime fishing pier overlooking the Gulf of Mexico. It wouldn't be the same if it was in a different location. So thank you for your time. And as always, if you have any questions about tourism, please feel free to contact Visit Corpus Christi.
Thank you. If you'd leave your business card, that would be great. I have a statistic question I want to ask you all later. Thank you.
Love statistics.
Thank you. At this time, I'm calling Carla, Carla Finkhouse. Welcome, Carla. Good morning.
Commissioners. My name is Carla Finkus. I am a born and raised Corpus Christian. I, so I've lived on the coast my entire life. I've been a resident of the island for the last five years. I grew up on Padre Island and on the beach, fished Bob Hall Pier many, many times as a youngster in the late 60s. I remember looking forward to grabbing a bite to eat each time at the little restaurant that was on the pier when I was growing up, that served french fries, hamburgers, hot dogs, concession food. And we'd all get something after a long day of fishing, much like now with my family, grabbing a nice meal and a cold drink at Michael Mays after a day at the beach, or a day fishing on Bob Hall Pier. My family moved to Flower Bluff in 1970, so I spent most of my teenage summers, summer days at the beach with my friends and my classmates. My husband and I both are graduates of Flower Bluff High School, and we're scheduled to attend our 40th class reunion in October at Michael Mays. So many of our classmates that have moved away are looking forward to spending some time on the sweet island that they left. They no longer live on the coast. And Michael Mays is the perfect venue to host it. Some cannot physically make it through the sand to be on the actual beach, but getting on Bob Hall Pier with the ramp-type entrance into Michael Mays is ideal. We will all still be on the beach, enjoying each other's company and getting reacquainted over a nice dinner on the water, in a great atmosphere that all can share in, to relive a little piece of time we once shared as youngsters together on this very beach, regardless of our physical limitations. In addition, we have longtime family friends that visit us yearly from Fort Worth, who were once stationed in the Navy here in Corpus Christi in the early 70s, and they love coming once again to the coast and the beach, and being on Bob Hall Pier. They love us to take them to Michael Mays to enjoy a dinner, all the while being right on the beach, right on the water. It's wonderful to have a place like that to take them to, to relish in the beauty of our beach, enjoy the goodness of our local cuisine, and watch other visitors and tourists experiencing and enjoying as well. The proposal for the new location in Port Aransas for adding an observation deck on Horace Caldwell Pier, which is an identical pier to Bob Hall Pier, after they both were rebuilt due to severe damages from Hurricane Allen in 1980, is not only for...
If you wouldn't mind, you're doing a great job. If you just wrap up.
It's not only for a great, it would be great for both communities. Just as Bob Hall Pier and Horace Caldwell Pier have become a natural and ingrained part of our experiences on the coast, for both locals and tourists, Michael Mays has also become an expected part of the whole beach experience here on North Padre Island to many of the locals and the tourists.
So for the record, you're, you're for, or against, or neutral for the proposal?
I am for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe Councilwoman Wahado was here earlier, and she had to leave.
You want me to read this for you, Judge, or you want to read it?
I'll go ahead and read it. I'll go ahead and read it.
Thanks.
Thank you. This compromise today is an example of the federal government in Oasis County working together to solve an area problem. Judge Canales surely, okay, I'm going to forget the leader, the nice thing. Finding a solution with partners such as the Port of Corpus Christi is at the heart of what is being accomplished. This was a partnership between the county and local business working that generates revenue to the taxpayer. That revenue is being protected today with this compromise. All parties have come together to find a solution, and that is what good government does. My constituents have asked me to stand in support of Michael's Mays and this agreement. And this is signed by Councilwoman at-large Paulette Waharado. And with that, we have terminated all of the, at least the ones that I had written down, and I'll ask once more if there is anybody, Dr. Needham. Court recognizes Chair of Coastal Parks. I'm sorry, the Coastal Parks Board. Sorry, Scott, almost took it away from you. Coastal Parks Board.
Thank you. I'm Jim Needham, Chair of the New Oasis County Coastal Parks Board, and thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I'm not going to say much more than what's been said. I think the people who spoke here have done a great job of capturing the importance of Michael Mays and what a wonderful change it's been. I wanted to add a little historical perspective. I've been on the Parks Board since two thousand two, two thousand three, and when I came onto the board about that time, the former vendor had, was closing up, and so we went into a search for, for new concessionaires or vendors, whatever term you want to use. And May and others spoke about that. It was a revolving door. We would get somebody in there, they'd last a year or two, they, they would leave, we would shutter the building for months until we could get another RFP out. Sometimes we didn't even get responses to our RFP. The reason why is because the building's a concrete block building with almost no windows and no ventilation, no air conditioning, not really conducive to operating a business. And so, we had the idea, probably around two thousand five, of building the observation deck and got that done. And it's the, one of the things I wanted to point out is the Port Aransas project is not a new idea. We've had the Port Aransas, we wanted to keep the piers as twins and wanted to do an observation deck at Port Aransas as well. So, that's been in our master plan for probably approaching fifteen years. And so, it's not a project that was just created out of convenience to remedy this situation. It's a project that we've had on our books a long time, something that we've aspired to do. And I'm, by the way, I'm, I am in support of this because with UTMSI, Port Aransas Schools, the museum over there, the estuaries program, all of those, it'll be a great facility and we're going to work on the design to make sure it's open and have plenty of graphics and things that support the educational mission. And I, I know from being involved in environmental education my entire career, it'll be the perfect location and a great facility for environmental education, teaching people about our coastal environment.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Jim. Thank you. And I'm going to sign you in. Actually, I'm going to hand this, go ahead, Troy, if you'll come up, or if you don't mind, if both of y'all would, you don't have to sign in because it's an agenda item, never mind. We're good, sorry. I just did it for the clerk so they would know the names. You know, it's nice to just know who's here, right? I'll get you that.
These are my regular glasses.
And the court recognizes Troy Adler. He's the vice chair of Coastal Parks Board.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Morning.
Thank you. I am honored to serve as a vice chairman of the New Oasis County Coastal Parks Board, but today I'm here as a private citizen. I am a lifelong resident of New Oasis County, and I've been a beach enthusiast my entire life. I've been fortunate to experience the growth of the island and to watch it become what it is today, which I believe is terrific. Although I personally favor the earlier years, which were substantially less crowded, I fully understand why our small part of Texas is so appreciated and visited. Years ago, as many of you may remember, a drive to the beach was an easy one, but once you were there, you only had what you brought with you. The food all had sand in it, we had the cold leftover burgers and soggy bean burritos and whatever drink we could carry. The snow cone truck blaring clown tunes was the only option for snacks. Great memories, but I'm sure glad the infrastructure and accommodations have improved. As you all well know, one of the major driving forces for regional economic development is our tourism on our beaches, and these tourists need a place to congregate for many reasons and events. We're extremely fortunate to have a facility on the beach to accommodate these events, and that is Michael Mays Restaurant. For most of my life, fifty-plus years, it was difficult to get beach essentials on the beach. There was never a place on the beach for food, beverages, entertainment, fishing supplies, snacks, souvenirs, and educational outreach that was near the quality of what we currently have at Michael Mays. The location of Michael Mays on Bob Hall Pier is a tremendous asset to both the county-owned pier and the community. A friend of mine, Mrs. Yolanda Palacios, is a regular visitor and fisherwoman on the pier. I told her about this presentation, and she requested that I tell you that she loves Michael Mays because she rarely catches fish on the pier but can still have a great fish dinner. I'm always amazed at how much the locals and out-of-towners appreciate and enjoy the atmosphere at Michael Mays. The winter months are my favorite on cool and calm days, but the restaurant is always comfortable regardless of weather conditions. I've been at Michael Mays when somber military memorials were being held. I've seen people joyously celebrating graduations and birthdays, retirements and engagements. My family and I have enjoyed watching huge tables of sunburned vacationers of all ages making memories as they watched a member of their party attempt to sing karaoke on Friday evenings. We're very fortunate to live in a community that has a quality beachfront, one that is well-maintained and protected. It is extremely important that we continue to strive to provide exceptional accommodations for the enjoyment and safety of our guests and residents alike. The dedication that the owners have shown and the quality products that are produced at this facility are a major positive impact on our entire region. I am in full support of allowing Michael Mays to continue operating for the benefit of all residents of New Oasis County as well as our tourists. I hope for your support today as well. Thank you for your time.
And your stance on the proposal.
Thank you.
And your stance on the...
Yes, I am in full support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that probably, yes, of course, John White. John is also a member of the Coastal Parks Board for the clerk.
I rolled, I rolled in and sat down and couldn't go back to sign up. I'm John White. I've been a twenty-seven-year resident of the island. In fact, now we live both in town and on the island, and we split our week between both places. I've been a member of the County Coastal Park Board now since oh-nine and have been on the right side of all of the votes to do Michael Mays and all of the upgrades we've done and for the other commissioners of the court. All the other upgrades have been done out there for our local residents and the tourists. I'm highly in favor of doing the Port Aransas thing, we need that. And I've, in terms of background of working with the community here, I've been multiple years president of Padre Island Business Association, and I'm also the president of the homeowners association of a two-hundred-unit condo complex on the island called Beach Club. That's two hundred units, and one hundred and seventy-six of them are in the rental pool for our tourists and our local people who live an hour, maybe two hours away that can, can use those at all times. So, I'm highly in favor of the continuation of what's being done at Michael Mays and what's coming at Port Aransas. And I can also say that I've lived either near or on the beach for all but two of my eighty-two years. Not all of it in Texas, but after I retired, I got here pretty quick. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to do some housekeeping first. I'm going to call for the motion in which I'm going to make myself because it is my proposal. And, and I've got second, and then I'd like to ask for discussion and any questions that might come up. But first, let me just say I made a few notes while you all were visiting, and I think there's something that really we just, we glossed over, and it's really important for the effort of, for transparency that I, that I make certain that we all understand what's at stake. Our options, Commissioners, are very simple. I believe that we have found an elegant solution for a very difficult problem that was not created by us but must be solved by us. Number one, we could pay the money back to the United States Fish and Wildlife, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, the original grant plus interest, that's plus, 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 from two thousand and seven to two thousand and nineteen. And those dollars would not go to U.S. Fish and Wildlife for the good work that they do, because the program has terminated, it would go to General Treasury. Number two, we could terminate the contract with Michael Mays and lose those sixty-five to eighty employees and all of the amazing, just all the representative and collective thought that was here just displaying in the last over thirty minutes. We could lose all of that nature and essence that is our island. Or, number three, we could build a great county facility, which we have found a way to fund responsibly, operated by county parks, create an educational curriculum that involves STEM, our own county library system, pre-K to graduate work, including safety and educational opportunities for all who are not a student but just the lifelong lover of nature. I believe, as in my cousin Vinnie perfectly says, I'll take option number three. I think there is not even a doubt in my mind. Sometimes this job keeps me up at night, not knowing what the right thing to do is, understanding that the complexities are so grand. In this case, it's not even hard, and I don't often go out on a limb. If anyone knows and watched me for seven months, respect is given in this courtroom, not only to my colleagues but to absolutely everybody that walks in these doors. So, while I like to be an advocate, it's rare that you would hear me say I am absolutely one-hundred percent know that this is the right solution fiscally, I know it's the right solution environmentally, and I know it's the right solution for education. There is such a lack of opportunities for pre-K through graduate studies program in our community, this is going to be an unbelievable asset. I did not know that when we went in. Once we started making phone calls, it was as if we were no longer trying to just solve a financial problem. We were expanding into an arena, as Jim said, that had been wanted since two thousand and probably five under the master plan. It never had legs. Hurricane Harvey really realized an opportunity to redevelop IB McGee Park in a way that it always should have been, but now we have a mechanism to get this done. Again, I want to reiterate, I just happen to firmly believe that paying money back and getting nothing in return is a terrible solution. Getting rid of something that is such a jewel for the Gulf of Mexico and for all of us here in our community would be a travesty. And to do number three would be the most wonderful collaborative thing we could do this year together, besides pass our budget. I ask my fellow commissioners to put aside their justifiable disappointment that we made a terrible mistake in interpreting a contract with the United States Fish and Wildlife to our detriment. I ask that you put away your emotions and think not with your heart but with your head. This is the intellectually perfect solution. And with that, I have a motion and a second, and I invite you to challenge me in every way. That is the beauty of our government. Please fire away. Commissioner Vaughn.
I'm not going to challenge you.
That's okay.
Mr. Perez, you are a great salesman for the island, and I want the code to your garage before you leave. I'll just say this, you know, this whole thing was handled terribly, and the people that handled it are not here now. The owners of Michael Mays weren't involved in that. I don't think you should be penalized for that. I've not been to your restaurant, I need to go there. I haven't done that yet, but I live at Cal Island, it's a long ways. But you're such an integral part of the community, I've heard nothing but nice things about your restaurant. I think we can, it's terrible to have to blame someone for something, but I think we, the previous court messed up and the legal messed up, and they shouldn't have done it like it was done. But to me, this is a no-brainer. We have the money to spend it into another observation deck. I mean, we don't want to send that back. If we can build another one, I say go do it. Thank you.
Commissioner Modest, do you have any comments?
So, to me, both items are, are separate, and the success that we've seen at Michael Mays is, is great, and I agree, it gives us something to, to do and to entertain and to really have as a focus point there for visitors and residents alike. And so, you know, I want to move forward and give my support to the Horace Caldwell Pier, but my issue is, is that it's asking exactly for what we had previously. And so, the point of contention that we've had with this whole project over the years has been that what was initially proposed and what we have now is what got us into trouble with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So, to me, that's a concern when we say we want to do the same exact thing and do it over here. So...
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I think we may have misled you. No, there's, this would be a one-hundred percent open-air facility with no concession air at all. I don't know, I'm so sorry. That is, that's something that you're looking at from Michael Mays that she gave to you as her own...
There's no concession?
No, sir. None, none whatsoever.
It says, I'm calling Judge, it says right here on this introduction?
Yes.
It says light pier, observation deck, and concession area. So, that's a trick word to me now, okay? So, I look at it real close. So, hold on, Commissioner.
I'm not sure that got in there, is all I'm saying.
Well, I'm telling you, let me just finish what I got to say. You know, and this is why, this is where the word gets there in that, on that introduction area, you know, and I circled it because again, you know, it's concession, and we're in trouble for using the word concession, I guess, but you know, this, it's on, it's on that page.
So, Maria, that's a mistake, that's an error.
It was the description of what was in the vision statement, it had nothing to do with the proposed project.
If you'd come to the microphone and address us, that's, and I just want to say, and I sent this email yesterday, and I made, I was kind of tough on Maggie, I think I emailed her at ten o'clock last night and said, Maggie, send it again because it's misleading. What you're looking for is the proposal, and I want to make sure that, that we vet that correctly as to what this proposal is. But we are going to have, our deadline is not till August fourteenth, which you're going to basically vote on is the ability for us to send it, but we can continue to make grammatical, graphic, because I like the pictures a little bit in a different format, we can make these, we're just not going to make substantive changes, but we're going to make a lot of changes, we can make that change. But should not be, it is not a concession in any way, shape, or form.
And just to speak on that bottom of page three on that proposal, it was quoting the vision statement for IB McGee Beach Park, not exactly for this proposed project. I can take that language out if it just causes some confusion.
And what she's saying is clear, and I can understand your confusion, that is the IB McGee Park vision statement. That does not have anything to do with this project. She was just quoting the vision statement.
Yeah, I was quoting it to say that this proposed project falls in line with that statement.
Because there will be no concession area in this observation deck. So, let's clearly state that.
Right, we just need to make that clear. There's, this is just an open-air deck that is going to be utilized by all kinds, mainly Coastal Bend Basin Estuary, Mission Aransas, UTMSI, New Oasis County Libraries, to bring kids and adults in there to learn about native habitat and species. It might have an office to put supplies per the design and structural plans, but not any concession at all. No revenue will be generated at this location. And the purpose of that statement, and if you read on to, into the next, the top of page four, it does say that IB McGee already has those features except for that observation deck.
I think you need to take it out.
I will.
There won't be any confusion.
Just so that nobody else catches that confusion. And just so you know, we keep talking about, okay, so Horace Caldwell is a, has a pier, okay, guys? So, it's really the, we're building an observation deck adjacent to the pier. It's really important. We all do that, I mean, I say it too, everything's at Bob Hall Pier, Horace Caldwell Pier, but this is the construction of a substantially like structure that exists at Bob Hall Pier, at Horace Caldwell Pier, just for the purposes of education, research, safety, those, and utilize technology there. We hope to have like a Wi-Fi hotspot. So, sorry.
Is Ida here or is she?
Ida is not here today. Yeah, Ida has put together a program. Maria, would, sorry to make you do this, please come back up. Ida emailed to you her concepts and her ideas. I don't know if Commissioner Modest would maybe want, since Ida isn't here.
Yeah, so it was pretty detailed, and it was, it was so detailed that to put the... Yeah, so it was pretty detailed, and it was, it was so detailed that to put the entire, her whole curriculum into the proposal was just going to take a lot of room. But she actually has like month-by-month activities that can be done out at the pier, you know, down to what the target audience is, what the topic will be, and I can forward that to you. She did send us a whole, it's a whole year-long curriculum.
Well, and that's good, and that's fine. I mean, I think it kind of describes here what her, what her plan is. My thing is, look, once again, not to punish Michael Mays, they're doing what they feel which was the scope, what they were charged with, what the need was there on the island. I don't want us to repeat history again at this other pier, because that's what kind of got us into trouble. I think the options that I heard you say, Judge, was that we could spend this money, but it goes back to the U.S. government, doesn't even benefit fish or wildlife, or I guess it's the same amount of money that we would spend to get this fixed?
No, we would spend more. If you, if you just said, "Hey, we want to pay," you know, "we want to pay," it would be with interest. This proposal is a, is a proposal that says, "Please discontinue the federal nexus at one place and substitute this proposal, this observation deck facility as a new agreement." We would not, that's, that's our proposal to them. It's not to pay anything in addition.
Well, yeah. Just to have a few concerns, but I'd like to hear the rest of the court and then maybe come back just for a brief question.
Okay. Commissioner Gonzalez.
Well, you know, this proposal is not a done deal. I mean, it's just a proposal, so they could say no, right?
That's correct, sir. They can.
They can, and then we're going to still owe the money, and still got to pay the money. So, so we're taking another chance here that we're doing something that might not be accepted. Now, when you said legal, I don't know how we blame legal for this or anybody else. I think that the thing with this here, I mean, this thing was signed by the park board president, and they should know what they were doing. I mean, they got the grant, they should have been working with the grant and what the grant stayed. So I don't know, the contract was signed by the board president and, I guess, working with Scott or whatever, but, and they wasn't compliant with the grant. So I don't know what, I don't know what happened here, but, and I'm, you know, and Michael Mays, it's probably one of the greatest thing that ever happened, maybe it's a good thing, and, you know, people love it, and, you know, and I've never been there myself either, but I'm sure that I probably will like it too, and, you know, but I'm sorry it doesn't belong there. I'm sorry, but, and I'm going to be my conscience, because I think I'm a county commissioner, that I got to take care of taxpayers' monies also. You know, when I, when I ask you about the revenues, I ask you for a purpose, for a reason. You know, because I don't know, it fluctuates of what's coming in, but when you say 9.5 million and we get 250,000, that's like pennies, you know? I mean, that's, and even if you take away 4 million from those 9.5 million, you still come up with 4, 5 million dollars. So I think somewhere along the line, the county is not, you know, I don't know who put the cap of $12,000, but maybe it should have been higher, you know, and if the park, the parks did, then nobody came to us to see if we would agree with that, you know? I guess the, the parks just doing things on their own, then, and then we find, we have to fight the battles, and they should be fighting the battles, really, because they was, I mean, you're the guy signing the contract. So, you know, and I don't know, we're saying here that it's okay to do this, so I guess it might be okay to build another restaurant at Caldwell? I mean, why, I mean, if it's so great, why not build another restaurant at Caldwell? I mean, you know, we, I hear all these things, everybody's saying it's great, so great, you know, bringing all this money, so why not build another one? And I know, I don't mean a Michael Mays either, but I mean, another restaurant, you know, that, that people like? I mean, what, why not? The only problem here, and people have to understand that, you know, that it's in county property. That's the problem here. It's on county property, G O L O owns the property, but we, it's county property to us because we, everything's ours, it's county. So, and that, and that's an issue here, and that's why it's an issue here. I mean, I would like to see Michael Mays, yeah, right at the island, and build a building right there at the island and function there at the island. But we, we spent $800,000 building a bar and restaurant, not an observation deck, for somebody else to run it and make profit. And that's not, that's not the county's business, we don't, I don't, and that's the taxpayers' money we're using. Now, we're going to spend another $900 at Caldwell Pier for another, and that's also taxpayers' money, now we're going to, to just, to fix a wrong that we did at Bob Hall Pier. So, I mean, I don't know, it doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense that we're trying to do one to cover up the other one, and we don't even know they're going to approve it. But you're talking about us investing already 1.7 million dollars of taxpayers' money. You know, I just, you know, I hear, I hear things that you guys are saying, and, you know, the liability, I don't know, we have anything on liability, I questioned the liability also, is there any, I mean, what happens in liability? What if somebody walks out of there, get browned because they're drunk, or somebody walks out of there, they go have an accident, and, you know, and, you know, this is the questions that I've asked and nobody has answered, you know, and, you know, and I would like, I would like, I would like to have an answer, yeah, sure.
Do you mind if she takes the podium? I know that having owned a restaurant, you're going to address liability insurance, but it's also interesting that Mays, other life, is that she's an insurance.
I'm also the insurance agent for Michael Mays, so I can answer that. And if you look at the requirements on the original contract that the New Aces County puts forth, they put a huge list of requirements for us to be, referred for lack of better words, a concessionaire. We do have to have liability insurance, we have to have, as you pointed out, in case somebody gets drunk, which we have all of our employees, we require them to be TABC licensed, we even have TABC come out to do trainings on a regular basis for them, but we sell insurance for that liability too. We have a liquor liability policy that covers this separately in case that happens. We also have bonds, workman's comp, we have every insurance policy you can think of buying, and I'm happy about, because I get to sell it too. So, but no, we are completely covered for that. I know what you're saying, that, you know, there still has to be a rent amount, and that's why we picked that amount. We didn't make money for the first five years, we just barely started making money. We may be bringing in that income, but you don't understand, we have 80 employees, those are salaries, there's food, there's a lot of expenses. The insurance on that place is outrageous. So, like I said, we haven't seen a million dollars. I wish we could as profit for ourselves, that's just what it's generating as gross revenue.
Is the county additionally insured?
Excuse me?
The county additional insured?
Yes, on everything, yes, ma'am.
And does the county annually check?
I think it might be on the page.
Is it up to date?
Yes, we have to check it every year.
We have to submit every year.
Figured you did, I just wanted y'all to say that. And clarification too, Scott was not the one that signed that, correct? That paper.
I didn't see Scott signed it, the board president signed it.
I don't think he was around then.
Real quick. No, the, the application for, to draw down the SEAT monies was started in 2007, I wasn't here until 2009. And so, whatever that authorized use is, use was that they decided to go after, and that was under MMS, Mineral Management Service, which was the agency at the time that was managing these grant funds. So when it was submitted at the time, where I think the problem came is that they picked an authorized use that would have been better if they'd have picked onshore infrastructure as an authorized use, because onshore infrastructure would have qualified for this event. And we asked that when we went up there with the judge, we specifically asked that, because we thought, well, why can't we just amend the authorized use and put this arrest? And they said, because the program had been sunsetted. That's why the judge keeps saying, if you pay it back, it's not even going to go to them. It's going to go to some general fund somewhere, and we'll never see it. So, that's when this whole thing got started, in 2007. Now, I came in in 2009 in May, but I really didn't get started until about winter 2010, and I saw we had these funds that we were still drawing down, so I got fired up and went to work and started drawing them down. I didn't pay any attention to the authorized use, you know?
And that's the application that controls the contract. So it wasn't legal. We didn't have anything to do with it.
So y'all didn't, y'all didn't look at the contract?
It was, it was based upon the use, and that's the, the terms and conditions are based upon being an observation deck.
And concession. So we need some tools to look at that.
Hold on, Commissioner.
Misleading thing here. When y'all signed an extension, another extension, and, you know, again, was the word concession stand, was there a concession here, concession? You know, I never saw the word bar and grill or bar and restaurant in there, and nowhere in the contract, well, I'm just telling you what the contract that I got, there's nothing there on it, you know, it was all concession. I know you're DBA, you know, whatever, you know, Michael Mays, bar and grill, that's a DBA, but it's not, not saying that you're going to operate it, didn't say you're going to operate a bar and grill, you know, when they, when they do an extension. And that's, and that's okay, I'm just, I'm just, you know, you have to know where I'm coming from, because if it's okay for one, it should be okay for somebody else, you know? I mean, I want, you know, we're, we're here for all the taxpayers, and they should be, somebody comes to us and say, "Hey, you know what? I want to build something at the other pier, why not?" Well, why, why is Michael Mays just doing?
And if I may, Commissioner, I'm just going to point out, I did give you two, these are the actual copies of the contracts from the original contract. If you look on page one, it says this agreement is between Michael Mays Beachside Bar and Grill LLC, referred to in this agreement as the concessionaire. It says that on the original contract we signed in 2013. If you look at the amendment that we signed last year in April, it also states the same thing. Michael Mays Beachside Bar and Grill, in parentheses, concessionaire. If you go back to the original contract on the insurance, I just want to tell you exactly where the insurance was. If you look on page five through 14, it has all the insurance requirements.
Hold on, May, hold on, May, hold on.
If you have a concession and for instance, you know, I'm thinking you as a DBA, okay? Because that's how you used it the first time. So you're a DBA, that's your name, that's your title, but you were, all along, we thought, I thought, it was a concession stand, just like we had, you know, just, I mean, the concession to me, somebody that sells, you know, hot dogs, hamburgers, and cokes, no beer, you know, cokes, and, you know, it's a, it's a public place, you know, for recreational place for the county, you know, for the kids hang out, so I don't know if the county allows to have beer on their properties, you know, but, I'm just, you know, this is where, to me, with all the confusion, you know, when it first came, you know, this is why, and that's why I was still looking at it. You know, and even now, you know, we're looking at the numbers here, really, it really bothers me the way the numbers are the way.
I really think though, Commissioner, with all due respect, we're, we're, we really should have a real understanding of, I think there is a, there is confusion between what gross sales are and what her net profits are. The gross sales are only, are only work to our favor. If you actually did it on net profits, we would gain very little. Gross sales are there to show you that we're getting the maximum dollars that we get. But let me just say, there is plenty of precedents here in our county, that's called the Richard Orchard Fairgrounds. We also have a complete opportunity on a third-party arrangement to, and they sell alcohol, and they sell beer, and, of course, beer's alcohol, they sell liquor and they sell alcohol, and they rent through our third-party concessionaire Spectra. The word concessionaire to you and me in one context, and I'm going to tell you, we can change it, but it's not meant the way we, the way you're looking at it, it's meant in its legal sense, and that's also the appropriate term to give a concession to somebody for land. And I'm going to be honest, I'm not here to debate this today, I want to stick to the, to the proposal and what's good about the proposal, what's not, but I will tell you, if you gave me, with all the burdens and challenges that I know, including those sheriffs that just came in here this morning, if you gave me in six years the ability to make 750,000 with that, if I could have a payback in six years, I'll do that all over this county, because we do not have the opportunity to create revenue, very rarely, except for ad valorem and grants and fines and fees, we're so narrowly constricted.
Is that what I'm asking, Judge, is it okay then?
It is okay, because economic development, it would be, it would be, as long as you had the ability to set up the structure. And I'll tell you, and I've debated this with my own self, is coastal parks, I think, needs a little bit of guidance and help from us, I've talked to them about that, they don't mind sharing the burden, because it is a horrible burden when it comes to legal documents, but because the statute, the state of Texas legislatively created them and gave them powers, we never, as a commissioners' court, I wasn't even here, but we, the collective, we never even saw or had, had any party to the negotiation of those contracts. If we want to change that, that's something to talk to the legislature about. But I think honestly, if we went back in time, which I don't think we should dwell on, because what's, what I think your biggest issue is, and I want to address it before we call the question, is this taxpayer money issue. It's been very clear to me that the 750,000 by the end of this year, and you have how many more years on your contract?
Four.
If you took the average, mean gross sales, I'm sorry, gross sales, or if you wanted to take, just say, the average rental payment per year, okay, and I'm saying you won't make one, one bit more, which I think you will, but you won't make one bit more, and you went ahead and extrapolated that out, four more years, this county will recoup, will make, not recoup, will make a million-plus dollars at the end of her term. That is definitely paying back the 750,000 that was given to us to do what, by the way, I'm going to maintain as a lawyer, that we did, we provided an observation deck, we provided the educational signage, and we provided the plaque stating where the money was given. They have a disagreement with them, with us, it's an honest one, and because we have to limit our liabilities, this is the best solution. But I want you to know that the taxpayer has been made whole 100%, and the idea that we are now going to do something that we all deem is in our master plan for I.B. McGee, and we have a way to do that with precinct four funds, with outside agency funds, Port of Corpus Christi, and with county judge funds, I think is a really good solution. And it shows that if you are given money from the government and you invest it properly, you can have a strong rate of return. That's what makes it good for the taxpayer. And so if I thought that it was bad for the taxpayer, I could not in good conscience vote for this proposal or even put it together. But I think that's really important is to note that, mhm, absolutely.
The other thing that I want to just, I'm thanking, appreciate your time, I'm not going to ask any more questions. You can sit down. You know, and you mentioned the monies to spend out there for the, for the Caldwell Pier, that's, we need that out there, there's no doubt about it. It's a great, great project, and it should, should have done it a long time ago, but, but it should have been done with the grants, with the grant monies, not with the monies right now, and this year's a tight budget year, you know, and we're trying to, you know, I know you're putting money in, and it should, maybe it should all come from the precinct four monies instead of other monies, but I, I think that, Judge, right now, in the budget year that we have, and I'm waiting for Dale to give us some more information, I mean, can we actually afford those 900,000 to, you know, on doing something now? Or do we wait to next year, hopefully we get those monies and the grants, who won't cost us no money? So I'm just saying, I mean, there's got to be some other options too, as to how to build the Caldwell Observation Deck or the center or whatever you were trying to build out there, but I think there's got to be other ways that won't cost taxpayers any money.
Dale? I think he's directing that at you. And it's 600,000 of county funds, 100 of which are contingent.
What's been proposed so far is where the proposal is to use money we already have as CO obligations, so it would not be any new money, it'd be money that we already have to be reallocated amongst the commissioner and the judge's already authorized funds as certificates of obligations. So there would not be a constraint on the general fund budget, because the funds are already there, just being reallocated.
It won't affect our budget then as we go?
No.
Thank you, Judge. First, let me start this by saying I want to really thank Judge Ginnalis and the majority of this court for working to really try to fix a problem and not just give up on the problem. This is a very important project on both ends of the island, both ends of my precinct. It's important because Michael Mays, which completely disclosed that it was a bar and grill forever, and in fact, I think the judge went through that's been a bar and grill been a bar and grill out there since 2005. So there has been a bar and grill on Michael Mays, the location, since 2005. Sunset Grill served alcohol, Ozone Grill served alcohol, Pirate's Landing served alcohol, Barnacle Bill served alcohol. If that's incorrect, someone can correct me. So since 2005, the world has known that that was a bar and grill. Fortunately, we finally found one, and I mean no disrespect to the prior concessionaires, who did it right, who does it incredibly well, and who has added an immense amount of community asset to, to the island and all of Oasis County. This is not an island deal. This is a facility that is used by everybody in Oasis County, people from all over, not everybody, people from all over in Oasis County and all over the state of Texas. And I think that needs to be stressed, that these are related. Are we? Yes. And I couldn't have said it better, Judge, an elegant solution to a problem. I agree with the judge. I think the government's wrong, and I think if we went to court, I think we win. But what's the point of that? We're going to go spend a half a million dollars fighting over something that we might win, we might not win, because you never know what a judge or jury will do. Legally, I don't think we ever violated anything, but they do. So that means we can fight, or we can come up with an elegant solution to a problem, which happens every single day in government, in business, in legal cases. Thank God we have mediations and arbitrations, so that not everything has to go to court. And this is a collaborative effort of people all over this county coming together and working to come up with a solution. Hundreds of hours have been put in by the judge, by myself, by our offices, by the staffs to put together these proposals, by the Parks Board, by the folks on the island. This is what, as the judge said, we should be celebrating, is an elegant solution to a difficult problem. We can argue all day who's right and who's wrong, or we can just say, how do we fix it, right? How do we fix this in a way that's good for as many people as we can? Well, this project in Horace Colwell Pier has been on the books for years. I don't know what year, but it's been on there at least since 2010 or '11, maybe longer. So this wasn't something, as Jim said, that we just kind of came up with. It's just, I didn't have funding at the time to do the project that's been on the list without help. So now, because of the judge, who is the county judge, and to say with respect that all of it come from precinct four, okay, we can think that way. But you know what? I've given to a lot of projects. I've helped with projects that didn't, you know, come from precinct four, because that's not what we're supposed to be about. We're supposed to do things that help the whole county with an emphasis on your precinct, but the whole county. So the judge, who represents the whole county, has come up with a beautiful solution and is willing to put her judge money where her mouth is to help. And I appreciate that. And I think that's how it ought to be. And I hope she does the same for Commissioner One, and Commissioner Two, and Commissioner Three, when there's projects in their precincts that also need, because that's what the judge is supposed to use. I mean, I voted for the judge money being used out on the airport, because that's not in my precinct, but that's an important part of Oasis County, just like my precinct is, just like what goes on there. I think the widespread support is evidenced by the letter of support that were provided to you. We did this very quickly. We, I think we could get another 15 or 20 of them from all different parts of the county if we wanted to. We just were focused on getting this in, because the Fish and Wildlife gave us a deadline that we had to have this in pretty quickly, and so we're doing that. They have indicated to us that they, they are willing to, you know, do this. They told us everything else we weren't willing to do, so we threw that out. And this is the one they said they would be willing to look at. No guarantees. You're right, we might be right back here again, because they might say no. I think a very important element that we haven't talked a lot about, that to ensure this doesn't happen again, is that in our meetings that we all were at, we came up with the idea, collectively, to come up with this compliance part. We're going to propose a county-wide, for all grants, compliance policy, very stringent, that kind of mirrors the federal government's policy. The auditor's going to be involved, and the commissioner's court is going to get that on a regular basis. And that policy will come to you very shortly, because it's not only this grant we need to worry about, it's every grant we get in the county. We may have problems with every grant in the county that we don't know about, because it's hard to watch. So we're going to come up with a policy to make sure this doesn't happen again. The language that said concession, as she said, if you, if you kind of read it real closely, it says, she's just quoting that, we're not putting in concession, there's no concession going in. That's not the point. I, you know, I'd love to, but that's not where we're going. I, if you want to build something in Bishop, or Robstown, or Cal, that creates revenue in a different manner, I'm all in. So this isn't just because it's in my precinct, it's because I think, as the judge said, we have to look at ways to creatively find revenue other than raising people's property taxes. And to even consider not supporting this because of the, and to lose the $650,000 that they've already given in revenue, to fire and unemployed 60 to 80 people, because allegedly a mistake was made, and I say allegedly, because I still don't think a mistake was made, but for the sake of this discussion, allegedly a mistake's made, is not a practical business decision. And I think, you know, we have to look at where we want to go and where we want to be. Now, we've talked about the value of the lease space. Let me tell you guys, that's what, 2,500 square feet, Scott? Anybody in town pay $12,000 a month for 2,500 square feet? If you don't think we're getting a fair lease rate on 2,500 square feet, you need to rethink that. That was a heck of a deal, the Parks Board negotiated, a heck of a financial deal for this county, because nobody gets $12,000 a month potentially. At the lowest, what do we get, 6,500 out there on the low month, maybe? So nobody, you don't get 6,000 a month for 2,500 square feet. So quite frankly, to say that deal was not a good deal is befuddling to me as well. So at the end of the day, this project at Horace Colwell Pier, to build this observation deck, is a great, great project. It is something that, I mean, people jumped all over. We, it took us no time to get all these letters of support from all these different people, because they were so excited. I mean, I didn't expect Ida to spend, to come up with that kind of curriculum, but how cool is that? She came up with this, and wow, what a neat idea to be able to use our Keach Family Library in the northwest part of our district to help those on the island in Port Aransas, and, and visitors and everywhere else. So anyway, I think this is a great project. Again, I want to end by saying, I appreciate the positive approach on trying to fix something. I appreciate the judge's leadership on this. Without, we wouldn't be here without it. New set of eyes is always, is often a good thing. Even though the, the observation deck was on the books, and we were trying to figure it out, it took her to put the pieces together to say, hey, why don't we mirror these or marry these together? So thank you, Judge, for your leadership on this. Believe me, this is one of those projects that has caused me a lot of sleepless nights, not because I didn't think what you're doing is the right thing to do, it was because I didn't, we were having a hard time figuring out what to do. And so I think, without a doubt, this is a good expenditure of money. I am reallocating some of the CO monies that I had, that I probably was going to use for other things, because this is so important, and because the Port of Corpus Christi deemed it so, as did Judge Canales, and hopefully the rest of the court will say, will see fit. So thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to visit, and I look forward to the hopeful passage of this today, and the hopeful acceptance of this by U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And I would, I would like to note that it's kind of important that we haven't talked about either. One of the letters of support for this project is from United States Fish and Wildlife Texas Coastal Ecological Service Field Office. If that doesn't indicate to you how Texas, who has United States Fish and Wildlife, might think about this, then I hope you would consider that as well. They, their local office was so supportive and so positive about this project, they submitted a letter of support that will be submitted to their agency upstream. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we take a vote, just a quick legal question. If the proposal were to pass today, and if the proposal were to be accepted, could we then, upon ratification of it, Lauta, could we maybe put a reimbursement provision, so that if somebody wanted to, if we did get a grant later on, then we could reimburse the county? Could, could we do that? Because I'd be willing to put a reimbursement provision. Or let's say we had an outside company come in and say, I want to give another X dollars to this project. Could we then maybe pay the county back with that if we were carefully thinking?
It can be, it can be like a donation, and you can basically allocate it for this purpose.
Right. Because we have, we think there might be some people that might want to do that as well, but for this moment, that's, that's not a certainty. I just want to make sure that reimbursement provision would, would be allowed, and I would support that wholeheartedly. Okay. Having hearing much discussion, having had a motion, a second, is that correct, from the clerk? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. And any abstentions? Okay. Thank you so much.
I'll go with you on this one, Judge.
You know what? You're a good man. Always knew that. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. And I want you to know, that was, that was, that was, that was hard for you. I know. That was hard for you. It's, it's, it's much appreciated. And I've already blown it, Carolyn. You told, you warned me, ma'am. You warned me, and I couldn't do it. I said we were going to get out of here by 12. I want the Northwest Rotary to please excuse me. We were doing the business of the county today. I missed, I missed Rotary today. I was supposed to speak. We are now at item number five, and let's see how we can tear through this. Discussion, consider approval of an interlocal with Clayburg-Tiner. This is going to be you helping me lead. Not to exceed $15,000 for engagement of a consultant to assist in Seeking Restore Act and other federal funds for coastal water quality projects. I'm sorry, Edward, you're going to help us lead. We'll let the courtroom, sorry, guys, I'm going to have to get you guys to, there you go. Thank you. And Edward, go ahead.
Just the briefing, just the briefing on the project. This is the project in conjunction with Jim Wells, as well as Clayburg County's. This is the water system. This is actually for items number five and six. It covers both of those. We're looking for development of water control, quality projects, and for us, it would be detention ponds that would help this area.
Motion to approve items five and six.
Second. And any further discussion? Okay. All those in favors? I'm sorry, we do have some discussion. Hold on, hang on.
We, this is the part of the deal that we are going to merge with their engineers and our engineers? Or is it?
Edward?
At this point?
I don't think so, yet.
At this point, Judge, Commissioner, excuse me. This is, just to get the ball rolling, we're going to get the agreement with Clayburg County. We're going to get Mr. Richardson on board, and then we're going to work with the engineers after that.
The $15,000 is coming from where?
I believe the judge is.
County judge. And, but you're right, we have to tackle that engineering, but there's so much to tackle. I think we need to meet with them. I think we need to have a lot of discussion. You and I haven't had that opportunity, because it's really petronil, I mean, we want to get there. Just so you know, I wish we could have gotten to it today, but if it's okay, Edward's going to try to get us together?
It'll, it'll be a.
Do you think we can do that, Edward, in the next couple of meetings, either seventh or the?
Probably be the last meeting, because we've got some people that are on vacation that we need to.
We are trying to hurry that, but we just couldn't. So we decided not to tackle that.
Because we're just spending a lot of money on our side, you know?
I agree. So we need to tackle that. So this is just for the interlocal piece of it, and our piece of the, of the sharing of the Restore Act specialist.
Correct. It just gets everything started, gets us on firm footing with Clayburg County.
And really, all of you commissioners, I'm going to suggest we all take time to go meet with Edward in this, because even though it's in one peri of the county, honestly, Carolyn, it's coming from your side, it's just going to flow right through JAGS, and really, Commissioner Chesney's the only one. But I'm going to say that it affects him too, because it's going to come right past that Oso and, and London. So this is an awesome five commissioner project. It just happens to geographically be located in, in one area. But it's going to, it's going to affect drainage for all of us. Lots more to talk about in the upcoming weeks on this. This is just to get us going with the legal and the personal services. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. I'm not sure that Laura likes it when we combine five and six. Laura, do you want, is that all right? Okay. And then on seven, it's a master service agreement. Maria, you're back up. It's for E-CIVIS. You'll remember, this is the cost allocation plan. I can tell you, this morning, we were still looking at it and making edits. I think maybe the action item is to direct the county attorney to be able to continue working with the, with the document, and with bringing it back to us. But what I would like to do is at least approve it from here and get it to you, if we can.
Well, it all boils down to the advisory, and that's what we're working on. And we're not quite done yet, Judge. We would ask that it be tabled.
Okay. I think we have a problem with time. What is it, Maria? Do we have a problem here? It was, they're going to have to renew it, because it was?
The original quote pricing that we were given expires actually today. So we would have to have them give us another.
Pricing, okay. I mean, look, I'm okay with that, only because we're coming back on August the 7th, okay? Otherwise, I might feel differently. But I do want to point out to the commissioners, because this is going to come back again, and I want you to do whatever you think is in the best interest, Lauta. But I do have new food for thought, and that is, commissioners, this is the software that we would pay 10, it's a, it's a company that we would engage and pay $10,000. They would give us a cost allocation plan, and they would also, under a performance pay structure, help us with our indirect costs for our grants, which we are not capturing now. Let me emphasize, we are not capturing them now. Harris County is using this service, as is 1,000 other governmental entities. But in Texas, Harris County is kind of how we, that's our reference.
We estimate, well, we've been doing estimations, but.
So indirect costs are a little different from like administrative costs. Administrative costs where we have to track our time. Indirect costs kind of captures everything from not only just grants administration time, it counts, you know, you know, what it takes to operate, you know, the courthouse, you know, auditing services, general liability, it captures everything.
Right. And let me just tell you, so let me tell you what the issue is. The issue is, is that it, it, it looks like, but does not behave like, a contingency fee contract, which are not allowed under Texas law for us, okay, unless you're a lawyer or you're a tax collector, okay? The, or a performance savings energy contract, or utilities contract. In this case, what makes me feel very differently about it, Lauta, and I'll try to write something to you, but it's, it's best that they hear it, is that we're paying $10,000 for the cost allocation. A true contingency fees, where no, where there's no risk. There's plenty of risk, because if you don't pay them and you terminate the contract, you have to pay them for their work on an hourly basis. So there's no, they, they have to get paid, one way or another, either through termination or through performance. And so that's where, we're going to reach out to Harris County, we're going to see how they did it. But I feel very comfortable that even if you told me that you're taking the strictest construction view, I'm going to advocate that we do this. We're leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars on the table. They will go back two to three years on our grants. When you consider Hurricane Harvey FEMA grants, we are in, look, we're going to bring in six figures the first year on this program. And that's with the 30%. They do get 30% of the allocation. This contract would serve us through 2022, and it is an awesome thing. But I think we've got to button up some things. And I've asked Maria to, like, I didn't like some of the inconsistencies on the net days. It was five days here, and 10 days here, and 15. So she's going to try to get you a cleaner version of my first edits, and then you take a look at it and see what you can do. And if you still think it's, you need to send an advisory, by all me, send it. And I love it when you tell me, it's an advisory. You can ignore me. And I say, I never want to ignore you. I just want to challenge that it, there's a, could be a differing argument. And, and that's kind of where we are. So I'll do a motion to table, reluctantly, guys, reluctantly. Okay. And second?
Second.
Okay. And motion, and all those in favor to table item to August 7th, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. The last one is the creation of the Oasis County opioid task force. If we weren't running so late, I would give you so much more. The bottom line is, is that most counties in Texas are forming, that are participating in the opioid litigation, are forming opioid task force. Our friends in Bear County, who are kind of tied at the hip with us on statistics, bad ones that is, have already done this and have already reaped the benefits. They're bringing in millions of dollars worth of federal grants to their county right now, in advance of litigation, because they have a task force. The task force is made up of electeds. Maggie's going to The task force is made up of electeds. Maggie's going to get you a copy of, I think we've already done that and I don't want to go through it, but I want to create this. It's, it's all electeds in the executive committee. But then we identified to the help of the Oasis County Medical Alliance, another 20 people that will serve on a broad opioid task force. And I just want to read the goals real fast.
Judge, before we go on, outside counsel is in favor of it.
That's even better. Outside counsel's in favor. Here are the objectives: To increase training and access to Narcan for first responders. Increase access to medicated, medication assisted treatment by facilitating buprenorphine waiver for medical professionals.
Still moved.
Thanks. And then the last one, this is really important, to get pill disposal locations at all, that's what we're going to be doing. If you guys want to be a part of it, contact my office. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. We're going to go into executive session pursuant to chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code and it's to work with Vernon's sections 07, 551, 071, 072, 073, 074, 745, 76, 86, 87. And we're going to do so to discuss matters with our attorney relating to litigation, real property, personnel matters, termination, county advisory bodies, economic development negotiation, other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion, we'll come into open session, take such actions appropriately deemed, as we have discussed in executive session. And with that, we're going to gavel out at 12:28 and all mics are off. Okay. Gaveling us back in at 2:48 PM. And we are, we have a few items after executive session. We are, we are coming back in. And the action that we need to take on number A, commissioners, is I'll take a motion to um.
Authorize the county attorney to negotiate further.
Thank you for that. And I've got a, need a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. And then for item B, discuss and consider the selection of applicant to fill the position of the medical examiner on or for, well, it will be after, it will be on August 1, 2020. That is, this position will be effective August 1, 2020. Want to make sure that's clear for the court. And it is our decision as the court to recommend, not recommend, but to approve that Dr. Adele Shaker be named our chief medical examiner as of August 1, 2020.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. And I'll just, I'll call him, Julie, what is your pleasure? Are you going to? Would you? And then if there's a quick moment, if you'll grab me, I'll jump on the phone as well. Okay? And then on item number C, commissioners, as you know, we've just spent some considerable time, actually over a month, reviewing the written applications and, and discussions. And today, we finished our applicant, our interviews of applicants for Commissioners' Court Manager. And today, I will take a motion to consider selection of the applicant to fill the position of Commissioners' Court Manager. And just to remind the audience, this is a new scope of work that we have defined here in the county. And I have a motion to approve Tyner Little as our court manager.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, and I'm sorry, the correct title is Commissioners' Court Manager, for the record. And hearing the motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Tyner, thank you for being our interim all these many months. You are so well poised and perfect for this job and we congratulate you on this position.
I look forward to working with each of you to make this county a better place.
Thank you so much, Tyner. And with that, I'd like to begin our adjournments in memory of and ask if anyone, any commissioner might have an adjournment in memory of.
I do, Judge.
Thank you. If you'll start.
Judge, my first one today is William Donald Gillis, Sr. Don Gillis passed away July 25th, 2019 after a long-term illness. Don was the father of longtime childhood friend of mine, Don Gillis, Jr., and his daughter, Galen Gillis, Galen Wheat, Tom's wife. And so want to offer condolences to Mr. Gillis. Interestingly, in here, this, this indicated that he was one of the oldest living former professional football players. So just kind of an interesting deal. He played here at West Oso and got, had a lot of, he was extremely, extremely good athlete in his day. So condolences to that family. Also, and I'm a little late on this one, I apologize, Mr. Last one, Rose Smith, who was the wife of Adam Smith. Adam was a board member on the Regional Economic Development Corporation. She was called home to be with her Lord on July 12, 2019 after a sudden illness. So condolences to the Smith family on the passing of Rose Smith. And then my last one was Gerald McGregor. Gerald was the husband of Gail McGregor and they lived on the island and Gerald was just a good guy. I don't know how to describe him, but he had fought some illness and he passed away recently as well. So my condolences to those families. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vaughn, Commissioner Modas, Commissioner Canales has stepped out. I have none, as always. The court always wants to extend its condolences for the names we don't know and we ask for prayers for their families. Thank you all very much for enduring a very long, but such a significant day in court. It's 2:53 and I'm gaveling us out.